Alternatively, members of the public may attend the meeting virtually through Cisco Webex events by visiting tempe.gov/clerk for more information. Council meetings can also be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Since we are holding this council meeting in a hybrid in-person virtual format, please be patient if we encounter any technical issues. Item number one here is call to the audience. The City Council welcomes public comment at this time for items listed under Section 2 Issue Review Session Items and Section 4 Committee of the Whole Items on this Work Study Session Agenda. And there is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Madam Clerk, let's see, I've got some cards here. Let's go first. I've got Barbie Burke. Please come up and state your name and place of residence, and you have three minutes to address the City Council.
Do I need to sit down?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, I'm Barbie Burke. I'm a longtime Tempe resident, went to Mount Carmel, Tempe High, and ASU, and I am also the Vice Chair of the Sustainability Commission. And I'm here today regarding funding item 2B, number 11 is our item on the Start Tool for Carbon Neutrality. And by funding this carbon neutrality, it offers a positive direction for a healthier, cleaner, and safer, more prosperous future for our city. After we passed the Climate Action Plan in 2019, we spurred on other cities to pass a climate action plan also, including Phoenix, Mesa, and Apache Junction, and I am sure many more will follow. Interesting to note that Mesa has as its aspirational goal, number one is carbon neutrality. So I'm here today to request, when you're looking at the funding for carbon neutrality, we are asking that you vote yes for that and help us to deploy the actions that are required for that for our city to make it a cleaner, safer place to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Really appreciate it. Okay, next up, we have Mark and Nando Garcia, I think for item 2C. Please state your name and place of residence, and you have three minutes to address the City Council.
Okay, thank you. I can take this off right now, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So my name is Mark Garcia, and what was the other thing that you needed?
Oh, just name, place, and place of residence.
Okay, I live here in Tempe.
Wonderful.
And I'm here because I'm actually asking for a permanent solution to a home salon. I used to own a salon downtown in Phoenix and closed because of COVID. So working out of the home was the next best thing, and we've been doing it for about a year, and we're also very conscious about our neighbors. And I wasn't expecting to talk so soon. And the other things that I wanted to bring up is that we're also regulated by the State Board of Cosmetology. So we have a business license that has been issued through the State Board, and we also go through the requirements as a salon in a commercial space. So I'm requesting that it be either permanent or extended and go from there.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, and next up, Madam Clerk, on item 2B, we have Crystal Brown via Webex.
Mayor, I don't see her in the virtual audience. I can read her comment for the record that she did submit.
Okay, I'm happy to read it if you would like.
Sure.
I'm always making you read all this stuff. I figured I can take some of the weight here.
Absolutely. Go right ahead, Mayor, and then I have a few more after you're done.
Okay, sounds good. So Crystal's comments here, "I would like to see Tempe have a carbon-neutral future and urge council to A) invest in both municipal and community carbon neutrality, and B) request budget forecasts for Start Items #10, #11, and #12. The path to carbon neutrality in Tempe will not be easy, as it will require funding to support the actions deployed to make Tempe a healthier, safer, and have a more prosperous future. The U.S. federal government is preparing to pass $555 billion for climate programs. We need to have a pipeline of completed and planned climate projects in order to be competitive for those resources. Start Items #12, Travel Time Index Average aligns with community carbon goals by expanding support for transportation programs, policies, and infrastructure. With these funds, Tempe can increase the number of public charging stations and amend building codes to support their installation. Creating a walkable, bikeable, and transit-friendly city means increasing the availability, convenience, and safety of alternative transportation methods. Start Item #10, Quality of Landscape Maintenance can align with Tempe's green infrastructure goal. Allocated funds can be used to design a new green infrastructure, increase tree coverage, and implement green construction codes. I know that Tempe city residents want an improved quality of life, and Tempe has always had a vision for the future in the Valley and has taken bold actions. Please fund both municipal and community carbon neutrality." Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, you've got others.
I do. Next item is from Jennifer Cole regarding Agenda Item 2C. Jennifer writes, "My name is Jennifer Cole. I'm a resident living on College Avenue in Tempe and also work at Arizona State University on the main campus. I'm writing today to urge you to extend and make permanent the pilot program for home-based salons enacted through Resolution 2020.164. I have been a client of one of the businesses, Lock Salon, operating within the pilot and have firsthand experience of the value of this type of business to our residential and commercial sectors in Tempe. First, this salon operates within the statute, maintains a self- and healthy environment for customers and surrounding neighbors. Particularly during the pandemic, this home-based business has allowed the owners to maintain a revenue stability and therefore facilitated both tax income for Tempe and stable homeownership. As a client, the ability to connect in a small, safe environment, particularly during the pandemic, has been priceless. Perhaps more important than my personal desire to support Locks and its owners is how this pilot connects to a national data and trends on freelance and home businesses. My professional research at ASU centers around the issues of creative business owners, artists, makers, and other small businesses, and the challenges they often face in advancing their work in and around regulations built to work for much larger companies. During the pandemic, nationally, 95% creative freelancers and home businesses faced income loss. Tempe's pilot project helped reduce wage instability and contribute to a robust, small business and neighborhood economy. Tempe can and should be a leader in supporting innovation in the micro-business sector. The Mountain West Aspen Institute has the highest concentration of freelance and micro-business owners in this segment of the workforce and minority ownership in the U.S. By extending this statute, building on it, and piloting additional policies that support our vibrant freelance and micro-business economy, Tempe can lead and shape a positive future for equitable business ownership, neighborhood stability, and steady economic growth. Tempe has the opportunity to continue to innovate and care for its residents, and I hope it continues to do so by extending and making permanent provisions in Resolution 2020.164. Most sincerely, Jennifer Cole." Next item comes from Paul Hyder, also regarding Agenda Item 2C. Paul writes, "Full disclosure, my spouse works for the city of Tempe. I'm writing in support for not only extending Resolution 2020.164, temporary home-based salons, but to eventually make it permanent. It was a thoughtful and creative idea hatched in the midst of COVID when no one could get their hair done or cut or anything. Lock Salon implemented this initiative and demonstrated its effectiveness. The net impact is this: Two professional hairstylists make a living and pay taxes using one room in their house with virtually no traffic in the neighborhood. My appreciation to Tempe leadership for thinking this up and good for Locks for showing how it works." Next item is from Kenneth Mushet, resident of Tempe, regarding Agenda Item 2D, as in David. He writes, "The draft guidelines for calculating public benefit of housing do not seem to address the city of Tempe acquisition of historic properties and potential affordable housing use. Although this potential affordable housing option is an option already in the Tempe City Code, quote, 'acquisition', dot-dot-dot, upon purchase at terms agreeable to the owner', unquote, the guideline also does not seem to address the option of the city being the developer of affordable housing, which should be addressed. As owner of Butler House, I have been denied a demolition permit by the HPC on December 8th. I have made two proposal offers to keep the historic Butler House on the parcel on December 12th to the interim HPO to stop the pending demolition in June. Butler House could be used for affordable housing. An additional affordable housing unit or two could be built on the parcel after purchase of the parcel by the city of Tempe. Please consider my two offer proposals, which includes a detailed analysis of the costs and parcel options, as an agenda item at your next council meeting. Thank you." Next item is 2B, as in boy, from Sean Swisher, resident of Tempe. Sean writes, "I would like to see Tempe have a carbon-neutral future and urge council to invest in municipal and community carbon neutrality, and request budget forecasts for Start Items #10, #11, and #12. Regarding Item 10, landscape maintenance can align with Tempe's green infrastructure goal of utilizing stormwater for landscape irrigation. This item can change the way people experience the city and create a greater sense of community. Regarding Item 11, in 2018, this council wanted to ensure the Tempe community was heavily involved in the Climate Action Plan. The community has made it clear that they want municipal and community carbon reduction to help them be more climate-neutral, which is reflected in the now adopted Climate Action Plan. Regarding Item #12, this aligns with community carbon goals by expanding support for transportation programs, policies, and infrastructure, and can also align with Item 10 by providing more walkable and hospitable landscaping adjacent to public paths to encourage walking. Increasing access to various modes of transportation is also important to create equitable outcomes. Finally, the federal government is focused on funding climate programs across the U.S. To be competitive for the hundreds of billions of dollars in federal resources, we should have our climate projects planned and ready to roll out. Thank you." Next item is 2B, as in boy, from Gretchen Reinhardt, and Gretchen writes, "Effective climate action is a must for Tempe's economic future, so it needs to be adequately prioritized in the budget. When my husband and I became first-time homeowners as graduate students over 25 years ago, our personal budget was tight. We tried to be frugal and wise as we made our home investments. We prioritize planting trees before anything else, knowing they needed time to grow so they could be, not only beautify our yard, but also provide shade for walls, roof, and play areas for future children, reduce our future energy bills, and even support local wildlife. A tree is an investment when it's the right tree in the right place that grows over time. Planting trees or multi-solving for climate resilience is a metaphor for the budget process we need now. We need budget forecasts for integrating Start #4 and #10, our whole community of trees, and for #5 and #11, our whole community needs to get to carbon neutrality leading by example for the Valley. Effective and equitable transportation is critical to community resilience as well as to supporting a carbon neutrality goal. Neither #1 nor #12, while both important, quite capture the critical transportation infrastructure gaps I see in Tempe. We need a budget forecast for a built-out half-mile bike-friendly grid so that every elementary, junior high, and high school student can safely get to school on foot or by bike. Integrating #1, #2, #11, #12, #16, and I would bet simultaneously assisting us with the mental health challenges among our youth that are associated with #13 and #17. Resilience and homelessness are also connected. Our vulnerable communities are most likely to pay the price for our planning miscalculations. Let's get our climate resilience planning activated as soon as possible. Thank you for noticing the connections between priorities for the budget forecasts and for including #10, #11, and #12 in the process." Next card is from Natalie Mendoza regarding Item 2B, as in boy. Natalie writes, "I would like Tempe to include Start Items #10, #11, and #12 in the city of Tempe's budget forecast, and Tempe to invest in carbon neutrality. In 2018, this council wanted to ensure the Tempe community was heavily involved in the Climate Action Plan, and the Tempe community agreed with the desire for increased municipal and community carbon reduction to reach carbon-neutral goals. I want the city of Tempe to invest in municipal and community carbon neutrality and prioritize Start Items #10, #11, and #12 in the budget forecast. It is essential that the city of Tempe continues to fund, support, and achieve its sustainability goals in order to build a healthier, better future for Tempe residents while setting an example of how to prioritize climate action, the future, and our planet. I firmly believe that Tempe's residents support investments in carbon neutrality to build a sustainable future in our city. Please fund municipal and community carbon neutrality to be the progressive, forward-thinking city that invests in the future and the next generation." And the final item is for Agenda Item 2B, as in boy, Kendon Young. And Kendon writes, "I would like to see Tempe have a carbon-neutral future and urge council to invest in both municipal and community carbon neutrality and request budget forecasts for Start Items #10, #11, and #12. The path to carbon neutrality in Tempe will not be easy, as it will require funding to support the actions deployed to make Tempe a healthier, safer, and have a more prosperous future. Tempe has already made significant progress on Start Item #3 with the purchase of the Apache Motel and the $450,000 in nonprofit grants for housing the homeless in 2021. Because of this, 2022 resources that would have otherwise gone to Start #3 can be put towards other items like Start Items 10, #11, and #12. Start Item #12, Travel Time Index Average aligns with community carbon goals by expanding support for transportation programs, policies, and infrastructure. And Start Item #10, Quality of Landscape Maintenance can align with Tempe's green infrastructure and low-impact development goal. So by funding carbon neutrality, we can double our impact by, quote, 'feeding two birds with one scone,' unquote. Back in 2018, this council wanted to ensure the Tempe community was heavily involved in the Climate Action Plan, and the community said they wanted municipal and community carbon reduction to help them be more climate-neutral, which is reflected in the now adopted Climate Action Plan. And with the U.S. federal government preparing to pass $555 billion package for climate programs, it is imperative now, more than ever, to have a pipeline of completed and planned climate projects in order to be competitive for those resources. I know that Tempe city residents want an improved quality of life, and Tempe has always had a vision for the future in the Valley and has taken bold actions. Please fund both municipal and community carbon neutrality. Thank you." Mayor, that closes out our public comment.
Okay, thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Really appreciate it. Based on some of the comments, I'm going to try to shift a couple of things around this evening, especially because we have a couple of members of the audience here, and we always typically don't want to make people sit through the entire meeting, so we try to be respectful of that. Let me see if what I can take first here is Item 2C, which is the Pilot Program allowing beauty salons and barber shops as home occupations. And I'd like to call Ryan LeVake, our Deputy Community Development Director.
Sure. Great, thank you. Good evening, Council. Ryan LeVake, Deputy Director in the Community Development Planning Division, here to provide an update on the pilot program for beauty salons and barber shops as home occupations. This request closely aligns to Priority Number 5, which is maintaining long-term financial stability and vitality by focusing on economic development, business retention, and generating employment for a robust and diverse economic base. Also similarly aligned to 5.13, which is achieving annual average unemployment rate that is below the average of greater Phoenix region. The specific initiative was designed to address the pandemic concerns as businesses were faced closing operations as a result of the pandemic. Let's provide an overview of the pilot program that was initially introduced. I'll go over feedback we received so far from the business and evaluation of the program, and then provide council with a direction on either extending the pilot program, proceeding either with a permanent ordinance or COTEX amendment, or allowing the current pilot program to sunset. Basic overview of the pilot program, so back in November 12th, City Council received a draft ordinance of home occupation. We had worked with the applicant Lock Salon on preparing a potential ordinance for consideration in the Home Occupation Section. It also went to the Neighborhood Advisory Commission for support on the request. We had a recommendation of approval by the DRC as well. In looking at this new ordinance, it was thought after the first hearing that maybe we should test the home occupation provision, see how it works, and give it a one-year trial. So on December 3rd, we brought back to City Council a resolution that allowed the one-year pilot program that exists today. We estimated, after evaluating the current usage of the home-based business, we've identified five salons in Tempe. One of them noted as temporarily closed. It's really difficult to find the total number amount of home-based salons because currently the city of Tempe does not have a business license program. So we relied on social media and search engines to find these locations. Some of the feedback and evaluation, we've consulted with the co-compliance staff. We identified any of the sites, locations, and found that there were no verified complaints regarding salons and barber shops as home occupations, noting that there's only about four or five within the city of Tempe, so it's a small sample evaluation of any co-compliance complaints. So far, we've received positive feedback from the original business and the patrons at that location who provide those attachments and comments we've received so far. As well, the Neighborhood Advisory Commission asked us to report back on how the program has been going, and we went to their December 1 Neighborhood Advisory Commission meeting, and they received, gave us a recommendation to support extending the program permanently. It was an 11-to-1 vote on the request. So we're here before you tonight to seek your direction to either extend the pilot program. It could be one year or two more years if the council feels there needs to be more evaluation, or we could move forward with ordinance process that would require having a developer commission recommendation hearing and two city council hearings to enact a permanent ordinance change. Or if we feel the program's not successful, we can allow the current pilot program to sunset. With that, I'll look for council's direction.
Sounds good. Thank you so much, Ryan. Appreciate it. Let me go to Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Thanks, Ryan, for the update, and this is great. Obviously, when we had you guys look into this program and try it out for a year, I think we're out of time with COVID and kind of wondering what's going to happen, how things are going to transpire. And I think we've learned a lot, especially with the business world in terms of, I think a lot of people, I won't say a lot, but I think companies and people are comfortable working at home, and however they work that out with their business, I think we're seeing a little bit more of that where, I know that some companies are planning to lessen the going into the office over the course of a week. So it's kind of great that we did this pilot program, just kind of get tested waters and see what's going on. I personally, I think I would like it to go forward. I'm torn between at least extending it for one more year, but I think I'm ready to say we can do it on a permanent level. I think it's shown some value. I think it's been positive feedback. We stripped it down to certain occupations. My only question is this, if we have multiple types of use within a neighborhood, let's just say within a cul-de-sac, is that going to cause an issue? Is there something we need to look into that? And the only thing that comes up is, and we talked about it with parking, is it going to affect the neighborhood having parking within those areas? So my question would be, what are the thoughts of, if you have, I'm just using the cul-de-sac for example, everybody in the cul-de-sac cuts hair. Is there something that we need to address or look at, or thoughts on that proceeding?
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Navarro, so we provided the original draft ordinance in your copy attachments. It's certainly something we can continue looking at and evaluating. The initial intent of the ordinance change was to allow, remove the prohibition for barber shops and home salons, and then allow them to basically comply with the home occupation standards that are identified in the code. And specific to parking, it only allows today for home occupation businesses one guest or visitor per site visit. And so I know there's some options out there on exploring whether or not it's one visitor or two visitors for a hair salon, because it seems to be the preference that it's better to set up two seating areas so that you can have setup for one client to the next client. But we had drafted originally that a use permit would require if there was more than one vehicle or guest on the site. That would help basically address that question of too much intensification on a specific block or neighborhood, but it's something we can certainly explore for and further into as part of the hearing process for that ordinance.
That's great. No, that's great. That really answers that question. It just for the life of me, it just slipped out of my mind, but it was, I think, more for just us on an internal level. If things were to go bad, we have the option, still have the option, to bring this back to council. So we go forward on a permanent level. If there was something that, some sort of nuance that happened, we do have an option to come back to council to try to tweak or change the ordinance at any time that might disrupt.
Yeah, I think initially, if we're allowing the land use, then that's something we still continue moving forward, but if there's a need to tweak or modify the home occupation standards to address concerns in the neighborhood, then it's something that we certainly can continue on an annual basis reviewing.
Perfect, thank you.
Great, thank Councilmember Navarro. Vice Mayor Keating?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm fine with making it permanent. I don't see any reason not to do it, and I get my hair cut at home, so it's mighty convenient. So, yeah.
Do you do it yourself?
It does look like I do it myself. I do pay for this, if you can believe it.
I think you need to purchase a new bowl.
Who's that? Who's that NFL owner? Anyway, yeah, go ahead and make it permanent, as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Vice Mayor Keating. Councilmember Garland?
I would, I love the information that we've received so far, so thank you so much, and I'm glad that we did look at this as being a pilot program. I'm more on the long lines of extending it for a year, and the reason why is I was hoping that we would get some more information specifically from the neighborhoods, like a survey asking the neighborhoods what they thought, because I know it's really important, it's wonderful that we're doing this, but I really want to know how this is affecting or not affecting the neighborhoods. So I would like to see that if we could continue this another year, and then maybe this time next year, before it comes back to us, that we have done some type of survey in that neighborhood, just to make sure that those neighbors are okay, because this is approving something for one person's house, but there are multiple people in that community. So I would just really like to feel that comfort that the neighborhood thought that it was a good, positive asset for their community, or that they really supported those businesses in there, because I think that's what we really need to listen to, is the neighbors. So I would like to see it extended for a year, and then really work hard on, before we can bring this back to us, on doing some type of survey and specifically asking the neighbors what they thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, thank you. Yes, we're living in changing times right now, and COVID is probably going to be with us in one form or the other forever, and I think this is a really innovative solution that we came up with, allowing the barber shops at the house. I'm supportive of making this a permanent program. I would like to see a two-seating maximum so we don't run into traffic issues, and I'm quite confident that if the neighbors are affected, that they will let us know, and then we can reevaluate case by case. So I am supportive going forward. Thank you so much, Ryan, for your excellent presentation.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams, Councilmember QB?
Thanks to staff for pivoting and supporting the local businesses, and I would like to move forward with making it permanent, and the nearly unanimous vote by the Neighborhood Advisory Commission was telling, so I would like to move towards permanent status for this program. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember QB. A quick question, Vice Mayor Keating, and then Councilmember Redondo Savage.
This question's for you, Ryan. On the Neighborhood Advisory Commission, the no vote, they explain why? What was their thinking? Was it the traffic? Was it?
Yeah, the one opposition vote was recommending, similar to Councilmember Garland, was looking to extend the program for a pilot program for one or two more years to provide further evaluation.
Thank you.
She was concerned that maybe some neighbors that have parking problem areas that might be of concern.
Great, thank you.
Sounds good. Councilmember Redondo Savage?
Thank you, Mayor. Much appreciated. Thank you, Ryan, and to everybody that has had some work into this, and I think our salon owners, first and foremost, that it feels like they've obviously been doing a really great job, not only with the comments that we've received via email, whatever it may be, but we've seen no complaints, and I think that's kind of what we base a lot of things on sometimes, unfortunately, is how many people are out there sharing their opinion or their concern. So I really do appreciate this program. I think we do have got to be a little innovative and think outside the box a little bit, and create some more options to make sure all of our small businesses have a place that is welcoming and that they are able to be successful, and if it's in their home, I think we need to figure out a way to do that. I understand some of the concerns. I feel like the majority has kind of already said to make it permanent, but I would be okay with, you know, one, two-year, at least a minimum of a two-year extension, but if permanency is where we're going to go, I'm fine with that also. But just to remember that I still think we should just make sure everybody's on the same page, so if there is an opportunity to do some type of a survey or an evaluation or check-in, just to make sure everybody is still comfortable. If there's anything that we need to do or adjust, we won't know if we don't ask. So if we move forward with it, I hope that we just stay on top of it, and that if there are things even the salon owners need, that we can help and accommodate them also, too. So I appreciate the salon owners for being here tonight. Thank you so much. And obviously, Lock Salon, they do some awesome hair coloring, so I'm just going to give them a plug since they've got a lot of really positive comments from a lot of people via email, so thanks for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Redondo Savage. I'm okay with the notion, I was originally coming in thinking about either making it permanent or going with the two-year, but quite honestly, since it seems like, you know, there's some people who really strongly want it to be permanent, and some folks who are saying I could be with the two-year or the permanent, I will go ahead and just say it should be permanent as well, quite honestly. So I think that gives us consensus to move forward with this as a permanent program. Anyone else have any comments or questions?
Mayor?
Yes, Ryan?
Just to add to, if we move forward with the ordinance hearing process, we can certainly also do additional public outreach to get those surveying feedbacks as part of that ordinance hearing process.
I think that'd be great, I mean, just to definitely address, you know, the question that Councilmember Garland raised, to make sure we get a little bit of additional feedback, but, you know, so thank you for that. And I think the other thing, too, what I thought was interesting was Councilmember Adams' suggestion about the two-seat limit, too, just to make
Just to add to, if we move forward with the ordinance hearing process, we can certainly also do additional public outreach to get those surveying feedbacks as part of that ordinance hearing process.
I think that'd be great. I mean, just to definitely address, you know, the question that Councilmember Garland raised, to make sure we get a little bit of additional feedback. But, you know, so thank you for that. And I think the other thing, too, what I thought was interesting was Councilmember Adams' suggestion about the two-seat limit, too, just to make sure that we don't start seeing kind of cars. I'm not saying I'm necessarily, I'm not sort of living and dying on the two-seat rule, but I understand what she was getting at about saying, hey, this is a great opportunity. But if at some point, there's 10 people sitting in someone's house, and there's cars all over the street, that could become a problem. But I agree with Councilmember Redondo Savage that, you know, in the last year or so, this has been in existence, we haven't heard any complaints. And I think that's a really good sign that, you know, people are utilizing this to be, you know, as small business owners to be flexible, but also that they're not abusing it. So I think that that's a that's a very telling sign. So, yeah, I'm comfortable going forward. I think it sounds like there's consensus to move forward with the permanent program, but to get some additional neighborhood input and talk about how many chairs we might want to have. But it sounds like we're good to go forward.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Let me next up go to item 2B, Strategy Tool for Aligning Resources for Tempe, otherwise known as the START results. And I see Rosencrantz, our Deputy City Manager, and Mark Day, Municipal Budget Director, and Wydell Holmes, Strategic Management. Love it.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, Rosencrantz, Deputy City Manager, and to my right, Wydell Holmes, Strategic Management Analyst, and Mark Day, our Budget Director. The bulk of the presentation will be them. But I thought with the history that we have with strategic planning, it would be great to give you just a little reminder of the history where we've been with this START tool. In 2016, strategic planning came to life at the city of Tempe, and the direction was really to create a living document that not only serves as a tool for the budget, performance-led budgeting, but really is an integrated tool within our organization, and more importantly, our community. And even tonight, as we're hearing the comments regarding START tool number eight and 11, it's been a long five years. So those of us who have been in the trenches are happy to hear that the community even understands what the strategy tool really is about, which is really about them. We set out to create two things, move the community survey early enough that you would have early data in that fiscal year that helps inform you as the policymakers of recent data, what your constituents are saying about the community and what they would like to see in that coming year. Additionally, you have heard also that we created a business survey during that time, recognizing that our business community is very precious to us. And we didn't have a vehicle to communicate as far as understanding every other year, at least, what they're saying about the needs for their businesses. We created the strategy tool to help inform you. So starting in September, we received the results from the surveys. We compile that information, what you have before you, and you have, thank you so much for completing the survey. That helps inform those of us in the audience and my colleagues as far as where you would like to see for this budget year. You have so many competing needs in this community. We hear about it time and time again. So this is really, just as a reminder, just a conversation starter to help you focus and give us some direction as far as consensus of where you would like to see acceleration in this coming year for those priorities. Set aside, also looking at the nine areas that the START tool has identified early, and know that you're not locked into those nine. Tonight is just really creating some consensus for Wydell and Mark to go back and identify what things you would like to see more presentation or more data regarding those tools. More importantly, the tool does work, because when you look at the distribution of the seven of you, you have identified exactly what your constituents have said regarding the data in their community and the business survey. So I thank you for that, because I always say I should start with the end in mind, which is those we serve as public servants. And that's what the fiscal year starts with. And it'll end with a budget adoption that serves them with the outcomes of those budget directions. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mark and Wydell.
Oh, we can. Thank you. Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Mark Day, Municipal Budget Director. So tonight's discussion about the START tool results and the budget process aligns with Council's strategic priority number two, Strong Community Connections, and Performance Measure 2.11, Receive the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA, Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Annually for Transparency and Disclosure of Information. Okay, so as Rosa mentioned, the purpose of today's presentation is to continue to incorporate the city council priorities into the budget process, and then identify those performance measures you'd like to accelerate in the upcoming budget process. So as we begin the operating capital budget process for next fiscal year, which starts July 1, 22, I'd like to briefly review the timeline and process for incorporating council input into the process for establishing budget priorities. So tonight, we're going to discuss the START tool results. We're on the left slide there, side of the slide, December 2021. It's important to note that we're not asking you what to spend budget monies on, but rather, based on your feedback tonight, we'll begin to develop acceleration models to put a hyper-focus on those measures identified as top priorities during the budget development process. This is one type of input that is utilized to establish budget priorities. And then, as we move along the timeframe you see in February, we'll be back with a long-range financial forecast update. This will set the budget parameters or capacity, if you will, for next fiscal year. We'll also have the introduction of the CIP projects. And then in March, we'll come back with an initial recommended CIP, as well as those acceleration models that are related to CIP projects. And then we move along to April, where we'll have the budget review session, and we'll have the acceleration models that relate to the operating budget, as well as the supplemental funding requests. And then the more formal process starts with tentative and final budget adoption finally in June. And then on the lower half, I just want to point out, we are gathering public input to provide you to ask our community about their budget priorities. As Rosa mentioned, we've given you the results of the community and business surveys. We will be having public budget forums in February. They'll vote the one in-person and one virtual. We also are going to have our online Tempe forum. So similar to the START tool, the residents are given a theoretical $100 and asked to what would your priorities be. So that will be open February 1 through about the first week of March. And then, obviously, the community can direct email to you, the council, as well as provide comments during the public budget process, which is held during the council meetings. Okay, as I mentioned, based on your feedback tonight of those priorities, Strategic Management Diversity Office will work with the departments to develop acceleration models. There's kind of three approaches we take. One is to collaborate. So could we collaborate with some outside entities or interdepartmentally on accelerating those performance measures you prioritize? We could shift resources. So we can ask departments, hey, could you move some resources around to make prioritize those measures that you have indicated? And then lastly, would be, there's additional funds needed to fund those strategies that would accelerate these performance measures. And that will come through through CIP project requests or operating budget supplemental requests.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Wydell Holmes with Strategic Management Diversity Office. And the list before you is in your packet, but just wanted to remind you of a few things with the START tool. On your honor system, you agree to give a maximum value of 20 points per performance measure. And we thank you for doing that, because it helps us statistically. The performance measures in the orange column are sorted by where at least four members gave points. And then in the blue column, 12 measures where where over half of the possible points were allocated. And then the green highlighted measures, those are where members of the council gave the highest scores if they were not in the top rankings. Before we, we'll go to the next slide then. So with the prioritization results, we have nine performance measures that kind of rose to the top based on the where four council members gave points. Of the nine measures, at least four were donated or are denoted in the orange column. But we have three in the safe and secure area of priority for council. We also have three in the quality of life, and then three in sustainable growth and development. So there is a nice distribution across the five council priorities that these performance measures align to. Three of the nine performance measures were accelerated and funded last year, and one has just recently received mid-year funding, and that is related to homelessness. And then seven of the nine measures were identified in our annual community survey. So again, back to Rosa's point about aligning to what our community needs are and what they're identifying for, and our response collectively to that, as well as two of the nine measures were in our areas of opportunities of improvement in our business survey. So we'll be working with our department, our departments interdepartmentally, as well as with some of our strategic partners to develop acceleration models based on your direction of areas of focus for tonight. I'd like to just go through some of the nine measures without detail, and I appreciate Mark running the show here. So our payment quality index is evaluated every three years. And this was an item that is in the community survey, as well as also identified in the 2021 business survey. This is also a performance measure that council chose to accelerate for fiscal year 2122. The next item is in regards to Feeling of Safety. This is a monthly survey, and we have an opportunity for improvement according to our community survey with, in our last cycle that we did in the signature survey for the community, this area also popped up as an area of emphasis. The next one, 3.28, is our Ending Homelessness. And again, this item receives some mid-year funding. And just wanted to remind council, it was part of our acceleration model in 2122. And in the last five community surveys, has appeared as an area of opportunity for improvement. The next item in regards to tree coverage, this is also including man-made shade. So the short-term title here, we will make adjustments so that we know it's about shade canopy across the city, not just through our live inventory. This was accelerated in 2021, as well with funding and council focus. And the funding was basically to maintain trees that we have, plant new ones, but also have a maintenance strategy with the growth of the trees. And then our next one is carbon neutrality. And just for a point of clarification, this is in regards to municipal operations. Earlier this evening, there was comments in regards to community operations, but this is specific to municipal operations, an area of greater influence. And it was identified last year as well for acceleration. And then heading into our last three, Feeling of Safety in Parks, we do measure this both for daytime and nighttime. So in your packet, you'll see several slides relating to this. And this was also items for improvement in our community survey in the last four years. So there'll be several slides here that we'll have Mark go through very quickly, because they're about our desert parks, our city parks, and our neighborhood parks, both day and night measurements that we track for that. And then our next performance measure identified in the START tool is our Transportation System Satisfaction. This is a survey that's conducted every two years with both writers and non-writers, so it's not part of our community survey as far as this particular dataset. But it was identified in our community survey as an opportunity for improvement during the last three community surveys. And then also this year, identified in our business survey. And then heading into our next one, we have our property code enforcement. This is a perceptual, this is not perception data. This is based on a survey in regards to assessments of our property that our team conducts. And this was identified in our community survey as well for as an opportunity for improvement. And then finally of the nine, we have our housing inventory ratio. This is again to maintain where we're at in regards to affordable workforce and market rate housing. And it's a strategy for maintaining and not losing ground. And this was identified in the last four years in our community survey as opportunities for improvement. So again, the acceleration models are really to help council see where we could be if there are different strategies we want to put in place, different funding, shifting resources around as well. And this is again, just a conversation starter. We're just looking for direction when we come back in March in regards to which performance measures you would like to see modeled for acceleration that are either on this list tonight or in, did not appear in the top nine. We're seeking input that way. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, council. Any comments? Councilmember Navarro?
Got a word. Thank you for your presentation. My question is, obviously, we did the community survey, and there might be some items that were more elevated in that survey than what the council has probably elevated. One that comes to mind is, you know, the appearance of the city, rights ways, you know, things like that. What happens to those categories?
So you're absolutely right. Those came up as points of emphasis in our community survey. They definitely align to our condition of city streets and sidewalks. So we do have a measure in regards to our pavement quality was already in the top nine of this particular tool. But the right-of-way landscape maintenance also came up in the survey. So that would be the council's choice and preference in regards to moving it as an accelerated model. We're happy to take direction on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Is that a check mark?
Councilmember Garland?
Thank you for this information. This is really fun to do, I mean, to really be thinking about. I'm not, I appreciate that it is not the end-all for the decisions that we make to what we're going to be funding, what our budget's going to look like, but it is a part of that. So I appreciated doing that. I, you know, I would like to see everything that's, I can't tell if this is supposed to be blue or purple. All the top 12, I would like to see us really focusing on those top 12 items, because that seems to be, even though it's, it did make the orange section of the most points by four members, I still think it looks like that that to us is still in this small group of seven people, pretty important. And if you really think about that, really, last month, I think it was, that we did, we really accelerated number three. So really, it's us now just moving up two instead of three, up to that next group. But I would really like to see us really kind of focusing on those top 12, which really, again, if you remove the three, it's really the top 11. But really moving those forward. And I'm really looking forward to the community taking this survey. Are we going to set them capped at $20 also?
Councilmember Garland, they will be giving a theoretical $100. Theirs are in $10 increments.
$10, okay. But can they do a cap, a cap of $20 like we did, or will it be different that they could put more than that on?
They could put more than that. I mean, I guess we could definitely look at that if we want to cap them.
I'm just not sure if it would make a big difference if they do exactly and similar to what we do. If that makes a difference, I don't know. Just curious.
Yeah, sure. We can look at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for this.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Keating?
Thank you. Councilmember Garland brings up a very good point. There should be some sort of limit on how much they can put into any, in the given bucket. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just gonna say, one really quick thing that I want to go to Councilmember QB. I'm supportive of Councilmember Garland's recommendation about taking the top 12, because the reality is, even some of the ones that were in the 10, 11, and 12 spots actually ranked higher than a couple of them that were actually higher up in the list. So it seems to me that there's obviously substantial interest in pursuing those issues. And obviously, I want to make sure that we leave the homelessness one, which I believe was item number three, because even though we chose to accelerate that item to the tune of a $1.3 million additional investment last week, I want to make sure that it's still present so residents can see. Because if we, if we take it out or omit it, you could, I could easily see people misconstruing that and saying, oh, they're downgrading their work on homelessness and human services, which we are clearly not doing. So my perspective is, I, just like Councilmember Garland, I would take the top 12. And I think that's what we should focus on. Councilmember QB?
Councilmember Garland, I think that's a really good idea. Thank you for thinking of that. I think about issue, let's see, it's number, number seven. You know, we don't necessarily have a clear, there's a lot of intersecting issues here, right, and initiatives. And think about the overall satisfaction, the transit system in Tempe. I was voting for that, because I want to see more shade in bus stops. And that was the only way we could express that. You know, we discussed that the night before, a few days before this was due. So I really like that idea. I think it makes sense just to put them into that bucket, the top 12 bucket, knowing that it's just one tool and not the end, be-all and end-all of tools. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember QB. Councilmember Redondo Savage?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. You know what? Wydell, thank you and your team. Thank you guys so much for what you do and putting this together. You guys know how much I love the START tool. I mean, there's no lie, how much I love this thing. But I do appreciate the fact that, you know, I think as we look at it, is, it is just a really good, important piece of what we do when we do make decisions. So I certainly do appreciate that and just kind of see where the council is. I guess, I'm not opposed to the top 12, but honestly, I'd almost go to the top 13. And the reason is, is And the reason is because 13 impacts people. And when we talk about addiction and what COVID has really done when it comes to opioid abuse and addiction and the things that we've been able to do to really just find out where we have some issues when we talk about wastewater. I mean, we have so much infrastructure already to be able to make a dent in that area. I'd hate for us not to focus on it. So that would be my thought process is that we'd actually go to number 13. I don't know if that's a lucky number, but maybe for me it is. So I really like the idea that we continue to, to me, and you know, we look at travel times as number 12, and then I look at number 13 as an into opioid-related abuses. That's just, it's kind of really hard to compare the two. And so I would really like to see us kind of incorporate what we're doing with opioids and really utilize those resources and those tools that we've created to really make a dent and even do better considering where we're at with what we've done. And I'm wondering, when we look at, when our community does this tool too, can we break that down? Because we talk about like pavement quality index. Obviously, there's going to be some hotspots, right? It would be really great to just understand where those hotspots are in regards to some of these responses. And when we look at what we say in regards to housing inventory, I think a lot of times when people see homeless people out, that, you know, what is their solution? Is it because they see them that they feel like we need to end homelessness? Or is it really, do they understand all the tools and the initiatives and the programs that we've created to put in place to get all of our individuals that may be homeless into a better place for them in the future, right? So part of me just says, how do we put all this stuff into context to really narrow it down to make sure when we do start adding resources and support tools to it that those are specifically going to make a difference? And sometimes it's perception. I don't, I hate to say that, but sometimes it's what people see. And it's so much deeper than that. How can we ensure that we're incorporating all the things that we've already done and continue to do and the things that we're going to add in the future to really make a difference where we're hearing it or the most concerned? So that would be my two thoughts as we move forward. So for me, it's the top 13, Mayor. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Redondo Savage. Just really quickly, and I'm going to go to Councilmember Adams. I'm fine with taking the top 13. Councilmember Garland, you good, or everybody else good so far? Okay, perfect. Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Next.
I was just gonna say I'm supportive of the top 13, so.
Look at that.
How about that?
A bunch of agreements up here tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
And just about pavement quality, because when I think about pavement quality, I kind of put it into two buckets. So one is arterial roadways and then neighborhood roadways. And it'd be good, and when we do the community survey next year, to kind of really drill down into that and what's the level of dissatisfaction with arterial versus neighborhoods. Thanks.
Well, it sounds like we have a consensus to move forward with the top 13 items in the Start Tool. Anyone else any further comments?
Mayor, do we need direction on appearance, streetscape? Or it wasn't, it was in there, but it wasn't, was it in the top?
Yep.
Never mind.
All right. You got it. Perfect. All right. Sounds good. Mark Whitehead, anything else, or?
Just thank you for participating with the Start Tool. Again, one of the tools in our toolbox. Appreciate that, and thank you for looking at the data that supports your decisions.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council for your input. As we mentioned, we'll be back in March and April with those acceleration models, and we'll try to, as best we can, incorporate your feedback into the online survey that the residents take. Thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. I'll agree with Councilmember Garland. It is fun. I do enjoy it. Oops. I pushed it right there. Oops. No. All right. Next up, item number 2A, Tempe Community Council Human Services Needs Assessment 2021. See, Octavia?
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Octavia Harris, Executive Director of Tempe Community Council. And I'm joined today in person by Board Member Nancy Blevins. Nancy is in her third year on the TCC Board, and she is the co-chair of the Community Impact Committee, which is tasked with overseeing the comprehensive human services community needs assessment, which we are presenting to you today. Nancy's co-chair of this committee is Linda Martin, who's also here today. And we really want to acknowledge Linda's contribution to this process. Additionally, I would like to acknowledge the other TCC Board members who are here in council chambers and online. We also want to recognize nonprofit and city partners who contributed to the Human Services Needs Assessment as part of the advisory team and as well as invitees to prioritization summit that you may have noticed in the community needs assessment report. So we'd like to call attention to Tempe Community Action Agency. Thank you, Deborah Artiaga, and to her staff for participating in a number of different surveys, focus groups, as well as prioritization summit. Additionally, we have Elizabeth Acosta from Community Bridges, Ron Denny from Tempe Union High School District, Kathy Danoffe from Anulief, Don Hawking from TCH, and Selena Imam from Icknow Relief, and Will Vakuverovich, who recently was a board member and also worked at Redemption Church. And then city staff, I want to thank Naomi Pharoah, of course, Paul Bentley from Human Services Social Services Division, Chris Charlo from Human Services Care 7, and additionally, Annette Odell, who is a diversity coordinator for the city. So this community needs assessment is an exceptional tool for helping us to align the strategies of the city of Tempe work along with TCC, particularly in the area of agency review. The community needs assessment aligns with performance measure 3.10, which is the human services grants performance rate, which is ensuring agencies who receive human services grants from the city achieve their performance goals related to homelessness, youth, domestic violence, working poor, seniors, and individuals with disabilities. So in 2021, TCC hired Corona Insights, a Denver-based research and consulting firm, to conduct a comprehensive human services needs assessment for Tempe. This was after a rigorous RFP process. Their report, which you have, summarizes the needs assessment process as well as the notable outcomes, including key findings and insights that come from a robust progression of research phases, which our consultants will go over with you. In a few moments, highlights from the process and report will be presented by Matt Bruce, who is the principal with Corona Insights, and Matt is joining us virtually from Denver. But before Matt joins us, we'd like to publicly take the opportunity to thank Corona Insights for their exceptional work. We were really impressed with their, with our consultant's quick study of the community. And Matt will be highlighting some details of the breadth and depth of their analysis of Tempe in this presentation. Corona Insights has extensive experience working with nonprofits and municipalities to dig deep into existing local, state, and nationwide data. Notably, Corona Insights was able to improve equity in the data collection process by targeting survey results from low and moderate income households to measure the amount and variations of human services needs across the community. By focusing on citizens in this demographic, they were really able to solicit survey responses from people who are accessing services now, and most importantly, reach people who are suffering or in need of human services, but are not yet accessing those services. People who are accessing, who are currently accessing these services and are in this demographic are really speaking for themselves in their responses in the survey. Their voices are very clearly heard within this assessment as they are the most commonly, as they are not the most commonly to respond to surveys and are not service users. And now let's turn it over to Nancy.
Thank you, Octavia. Here's why we're here today. This is really the first step in sharing results of the assessment. So the first thing is to inform city council of the assessment results. The report is hot off the press, and we're still digesting all of its valuable information. The second is to highlight Tempe's most critical needs, but also it provided us with a lot of further questions to explore, some of which will be answered by our community partners in the field or experts in the field or experts who have lived experiences. We look forward to those ongoing conversations. We also want to gather your feedback, either here tonight or in a future feedback session that we intend to schedule. We will also inform you of our next steps after Matt presents, and then we are asking for your continued support. We plan to bring you, back to you, progress on the implementation of findings resulting from the process, and we present to you with the recommendations for agency review in April. So why was this assessment conducted? Well, first and foremost, to meet our affiliation agreements that we would complete a human services assessment every three years. We also want to obtain current information on Tempe's human services needs, provide TCC and the community with relevant data to guide our future planning, as well as assisting in strategic planning and support current human services goals and outcomes. We wanted to survey residents eligible for services or in need of services directly. We also wanted to utilize findings in order to help inform the current agency review fiscal year 2223 process. As well, we wanted to assist in determining the priorities for future human services funding. And now I'd like to invite Matt Bruce, virtually, from Corona Insights to share with you the highlights of their process and the report.
Hey. Well, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak today. We greatly appreciated working with Kim and Octavia at the Tempe Community Council, and we enjoyed meeting and hearing from the many Tempe employees, community partners, and the residents throughout this assessment. And our work definitely would not have been possible without all their time and their contribution. But as was previously mentioned, the results of the assessment are detailed in the 2021 Conference of Human Services Needs Assessment Report and concise two-page summary. So I won't be able to share all the results from that assessment today, but I'll just encourage you to read the report and appreciate the diverse perspective of residents who really have, you know, serious human service needs and all the dedicated providers and partners that serve this community.
Quick question, Matt. Is there any way you can speak a little closer to the microphone? Some of us are having a hard time hearing.
Yeah, let me try that. Is this any better?
Still kind of same level. Any, you were kind of louder in the beginning, and then it kind of trailed off a little bit as you kept going.
Let's see if this is, is this any better now?
No, not really, but just go ahead and keep going. We'll make do. Okay, so, oh, okay, I didn't. Okay, so now, okay, for people, he's speaking, but now we can't hear anything, so hmm.
Any better now?
Hey, okay, try again?
All right.
Much better. Perfect.
Much better? Okay. Excellent. Well, I'd just like to spend a real quick moment talking about the process we went through. We examined those 18 topics through multiple viewpoints and methods. We first sought some initial input from a small advisory team of local experts, surveyed residents living in low-resource neighborhoods, and surveyed a broader population of service providers, facilitated a focus group with diverse set of mental health experts, and conducted in-depth interviews with low-resource seniors who needed help to continue living in their home. We concluded by gathering input from a broad team of experts, leaders, and community members at a prioritization summit. And then along the way, we analyzed demographic data and scanned some best practices used in similar communities. So I really think of this as in everything but the kitchen sink needs assessment. And each research step was accomplished with scientific quality. So by rigorously and methodically exploring these relevant topics and multiple points, we're able to reveal the accurate and useful insights that constrain service delivery. So although there's not a lot of time to review all the results, I'd like to share a few positive trends and resources. We clearly heard that Tempe's compassionate community is one that listens to residents and recognizes their challenges, along with discussing solutions. We heard strongly that the staff and leaders and the community are dedicated and they collaborate in a way to identify and meet the most pressing needs. Some other trends are, you know, rising employment and household income. Most residents saying that their health and housing situation are really pretty good. A vast majority of residents have health insurance. Infants, toddlers, school-aged children are well-served, and food tends to be available for those who need it. But aside from some of these positive trends and resources in Tempe, there are some tough challenges, and housing is clearly the top challenge. And Tempe is not alone in this at all. Housing has been a top challenge for many of the communities across the US West that we engage with. So it's, I think it's fantastic that Tempe and your neighbors are really pleading more in-depth studies about housing and housing solutions. So after conducting the demographic analysis, the surveys, the focus groups, the interviews, we then facilitated an in-person prioritization summit with the goal of beginning to identify and discuss what's potential solutions and actions should be prioritized. And so a select but diverse group of 20 summit participants, which included city staff, leaders from partner agencies, TCC staff and board members, and Tempe residents who had previously participated in the research, were part of this summit. And we started with a presentation of research results so that all those members would be better informed with the current state of needs and gaps. And then we asked participants to rank and re-rank their top three actions based on 14 criteria that you see here. And on this next table here, it shows the results from the prioritization exercise. We have the 16 potential actions listed down the first column, and then the criteria are listed from left to right across the first row. Higher numbers in the cells mean that more summit participants ranked that solution in their top three based on that criteria alone. So for example, we see many summit participants ranked providing emergency shelter as a top action if that was the only, sorry, if the only criteria was urgency. And many ranked supporting children and youth as a top action if the only criteria was permanency. The column on the far right shows the combined score for each action. And so now I'm going to hand it back to Nancy to discuss how the results from this assessment will be used.
Thanks, Matt. What I'm going to talk about next is basically a summary of what was a little bit difficult for you all to hear. And can we get on to that slide? Okay, sorry. Perfect. Thank you so much. What we identified in that prioritization summit with all the different parties were five priority areas out of 16 that were identified. And the top five are: improve access to mental health services, support children and youth, help residents pay rent, mortgage, or utilities, provide emergency shelter, and help residents find homes that they can afford. So those are the top five out of 16. Something that is really interesting to point out is that we hadn't done this survey since 2017, and most of the areas were duplicated, but we had two new ones that popped up in this community needs assessment this year that are going to warrant further exploration. And that is, number one is supporting the formerly incarcerated. And number two is supporting immigrants and foreign-born people. So while I don't have a lot of detail about that, that is going to be a focus for us moving forward. So how the assessment results are going to be used. Number one is agency review. Obviously, we gathered additional data from Tempe-funded agencies, the faith community, and residents to create solutions to barriers and gaps in services. The second is for the Tempe Community Foundation. New grant priority will be given for innovative projects related to the gaps that were identified in services. And three, the City of Tempe Human Services. Support and augment the services offered by the city and align our priorities and our strategies. We are looking for achieving collective We are looking for achieving collective impact. So how further will it be used? Number one, to review the report and prioritize our action, action areas. We want to evaluate the TCC's strategic plan and integrate report findings and insights. We want to research, coordinate, and design new ways to address gaps in services with our community partners. Engage the community members in understanding human services needs through convenings and educational efforts. Coordinate population groups to address related priority recommendations, and then determine focus and priorities for the 2223 and beyond, because we'll use this for multiple years, agency review grant process. So with that, I would like to invite any questions that you might have based on what you heard or didn't hear.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it. Thank you for working through all, some of the technical difficulties. That's, that's the challenges, talked about the virtual format, but you did a great job. Councilor Kubi.
Thank you so much, really interested in this presentation. And I know that the survey design is not meant to be randomly surveyed, and we're looking at specific populations, those who are very well-informed and engaged in the process, either as, as clients or as providers. And so I understand that. But looking through some of those results, one thing that sort of popped out at me was the, was the view of needs met for immigrants and foreign-born populations. It rated very low. And some of that, I want to suggest, could be a function of the design of the survey. If we're not, if we're meant to interview people who are engaged in services, if those who are in, living in the shadows are undocumented, they may not likely to come up and participate in such surveys or feel comfortable in that. And we saw that there was a number, I think 48% of the, those surveyed did not know whether immigrants were being well-served and didn't have, you know, a basis of information for that. So I know this is meant to be one tool, we have many tools that we're using, but I would hope that we don't look at, I, I don't think we do look at it as a black and white thing, like, we're not going to help immigrant populations, because I don't think that's who our city is. But I, I do want to know, and maybe this is a question for Matt, how do you get, if we're interviewing clients and people that need the services, and you could argue that those who are undocumented, living in the shadows, were less likely to get COVID services than other residents in our city because of federal restrictions or whatever, that how do we get to that population and really survey the needs that are out there in the community? And we know how, some groups, like, I'm thinking of IKN Relief has stepped up, and with Los Semillas in La Victoria, they actually did a lot of food relief and meal distribution directly to people's homes, because there were people who didn't even want to leave their homes. And so there were, those folks were known to other folks in Los Semillas, and they could actually go and, and help and assist those individuals. And IKN Relief is one of those groups that stepped up to really help. So how do we assess the needs of our immigrant populations, especially those who are undocumented? And how do we account for that? And, because we know our value system in Tempe is to help those who are in need, and they very well may include the most vulnerable among us.
Absolutely. I'm hoping you can hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, great. You know, quite, quite frankly, there are some populations that it is, the, the best way to learn about those populations are through ways besides surveys. And, and the, the realm of qualitative research really fits that. So qualitative research are things like interviews, observations, and, and a lot of that requires building of trust with communities, with gatekeepers who can help you access populations that you are trying to, to learn more from. It takes much more time and dedication. You normally can't get a broad analysis of, oh, this is what that population thinks. But you can get that rich, deep understanding of the, of the reality that they're facing, because frankly, they're facing a very different reality than most other documented immigrants or U.S. citizens. So I, I guess that's what I would suggest from a research point of view, is that, that qualitative deep dive, that, rather than being a survey.
If I could follow up, Mr. Mayor? So thank you for that, Matt. So I would ask you, how are we to take this information and address populations of undocumented immigrants who, and refugees who may be the most vulnerable in our city of Tempe, who may not be getting the services that they so desperately need because of their immigration status?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's worth the, the, often there, and, and again, in this kind of qualitative realm, there's, there's normally thought of as, as gatekeepers, people who are trusted within these communities, but also have some, also are, are trusting of, of city staff and, and city government, and/or at least other community partners, nonprofits, and so on. So really identifying those valuable gatekeepers, and then using them to help, to start to gain trust and be able to, to access people who are.
No, Matt, excuse me, it's Lauren, Councilmember Kubi. I know, I understand that, I really thank you for that answer. What I was looking at from staff and from the TCC is, if you look at the survey, you may say that, okay, our priority is not to help immigrants and undocumented immigrants, because that's what the survey told us. So how do we breach, how do we close that gap in perceived need versus action, potential action?
Right, so over the coming months, TCC will convene the community to engage around the data that we have. And so we understand that people that are undocumented are often really reluctant to speak with people in an official capacity. So I will say that our, like, our involvement in Equity and Action and partnering with a number of community-based organizations, which you've mentioned, like IKN Relief and Semillas, a- as well as, like I said, being part of project teams that are with Equity and Action, being able to reach those, those community members and ensuring that they understand that they can trust us with the data that they're providing us. Our current nonprofit partners, and some who are funded and some who are not, do serve those populations. And so they are able to understand what those needs are. So we take that feedback from them as well. So this, this survey, it examined a number of different populations, but we know that we need to have real-time data on, on a pretty regular basis. But this helps to sort of guide us in terms of what we know and what we do not know. And it reinforces some of the things that we thought that we knew. But then, like you said, you're pointing out, you know, there's some gaps in that, in the data there. So we want to make sure that we're, we're engaging with all the populations, and those are important populations as well.
Thank you for your holistic understanding, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kubi. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, just a, a quick observation. I really like it that the needs assessment team is very inclusive. You, you, you know, covered a lot of different areas, which I really appreciate. And I like the idea of working with one another so we can be able to streamline our operations even better. That's something that I've really pushed for. So with the people that you have at the table, it seems like that's going to be more, more likely to happen. So thank you so much, Dan, thanks for your excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams. Any of the councilmembers' comments, questions? Councilmember Garland?
How many people took this survey?
Well, there were a couple of different surveys.
Okay.
So Matt, if you would like to address that?
Sure. Right, we have conducted two surveys, one of people living in low-resourced neighborhoods in Tempe, and then one of service providers. So 350, we, we collected 350 surveys from people living in low-resourced neighborhoods, and then about 50 from human service providers.
Okay. So it, it seems like, so our population in the city of Tempe is 190,000. It just seems, is there a way that, I guess through the community involvement that you're going to continue to do, that you'll get more participation? Because it just seems, to me, it's great information. And I, I read through three-quarters of your, the booklet that came with it, and then my brain got fried with all the information that was in there. It's great data, great information, but it's, it seems like that's a kind of a small sampling group, and that hopefully then with the community engagement that you're going to continue to do, that that will help kind of open that up a little bit. And I was just wondering if, if we can get a list of the providers that were interviewed, because I'd be curious to what providers that you guys outreach out to? Would that be the providers that, that the review process already goes through, is using currently, or is, is that, did you just send it out to all the nonprofits in the community?
So we did have a number of the funded providers, as well as non-funded agency partners. And so we really wanted to ensure that we were touching every population that we currently serve, as well as all of the services that we know would fall under the category of human services.
Okay. And then I thought this was really interesting, on this really great little fact sheet that is provided in there, it says that you interviewed or had 35 respondents that were homeless. And I like the information that you had on there. Eris Foundation feeds the homeless in Tempe on Tuesday night, so hopefully they'll be a part of your process also. But she did an impromptu survey, just handed out a survey to the people that were coming and eating one evening, and she got 38 respondents back. But they have a great little survey, and I'll be happy to share this with you, it's really cool. But I just want to let you know that they asked if the people had heard of different organizations, and one of them was, have you heard of, like TCAA? And it said they had, 74% had heard of them, 64% used them, and they gave them a rating of 4.2. But it's interesting that different organizations that they reached out to and said, yes, we've used those or not used those. So I'll share that with you, but it was, it was a great thing. But thank you so much for this information, there's a lot of details in here. So thank you. And I'm looking forward, would you do a presentation afterwards, after your community involvement, to kind of come back to us and let us know what the community says when you have those meetings?
Sure, absolutely, and we would, yeah, we'll definitely make that part of our updates.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Any of the councilmembers' comments, questions? All right, I don't have any other than to say, really just appreciate all the work that Tempe Community Council does on behalf of the city of Tempe and our human services community. Clearly, lots of really great information and data are gained from both of these surveys. And so just really appreciate the continued great partnership and all the volunteers that spend so much time working on this. It's just, it's really incredible. This, this is a community that really has a heart for those who many times, frankly, need support from all of us. And the work that you do greatly informs a lot of the work that we end up doing and the money that we end up allocating and where we choose to spend resources. So just wanted to say thank you for all your work. It really does make a huge difference in what we do and, and the service delivery. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, item 2D, Guidelines for Calculating Public Benefit of Affordable Housing. I'll invite Levon Lamy and Maria Loknerup. I was going to say, while, while Maria and Levon come up, it's one of, it's, it's very exciting to have this presentation from my perspective. I know the title might not sound exactly like that to folks watching at home, but the reality is, I think that all of us up here recognize how critical this is, because this council has taken a lot of very unprecedented steps in probably having the most assertive affordable and workforce housing program in the city's history. And the challenge with that becomes that many times you'll have people come up, you'll have more people in the development community come up and say, you know, well, this product that I'm seeking to build is affordable housing, or this product that I'm seeking to build is workforce housing. But the reality is sometimes, you know, this council, our perspective, is we really need to make sure that our staff has the ability to really thoroughly vet these projects. And so when people are coming up making claims about who they're actually serving and whether or not it truly is affordable or workforce, we have some ability to talk to our staff, and they can say, yes, this is indeed workforce housing, and there's no way that someone can challenge you about this, or actually, no, the claims that this person's making are not true. So, so I was really excited about this, because I do think this has been a long time coming, and really appreciate Levon and Maria, the work that you've done to bring this forward, even before your presentation. So wanted to give that little update to people watching at home, but I'll turn it over to you.
That's a lot of pressure, Mayor.
No pressure, Maria, you know, just my thoughts.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Levon and I are very excited to bring this to you today. We're going to let him start it off, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So as we're discussing, you know, calculating the, the public benefit, as we're quantifying the value of including affordable or workforce housing in projects, housing developments, we did work to, you know, develop guidelines with the assistance of some consultants. And then those proposed guidelines, which were included in the council packet as a secondary document, were sent out for some review and comment from some interested parties and some stakeholders. But ultimately, the, the purpose of this document, or one of the, one of the big purposes, is, you know, as developers are coming in and folks are coming in to have chats, you know, we tend to all start from multiple different places, and sometimes we're all using different forms of math. I use algebra, they use geometry. You know, it's just, it creates a little bit of a thing.
Yeah.
So really, we're trying to get us all to one standard starting point, so we all know where, how the conversation goes, what type of math we're using, and at least what it looks like based off the initial information that's been provided. So for working through this, just to, to make sure for folks who may be watching who didn't read through this and, read through the whole thing, the way we are working to calculate this is the amount of rent for each unit that the developer is going to forego over whatever the, you know, theoretical agreement period would be. So as we're working through, just using studio units as, as the, and as, as an example, based on the information that's provided, you know, this rough square footage of the unit, what the amenities in the building are, what the, you know, the location of the building is, we use software to go out and conduct what we call a rent reasonable, which we're intentionally looking at reasonably comparable buildings. So we're talking brand-new construction, so we're going to go back and say, okay, all buildings, you know, all complexes of the same rough size with the same rough amenities that were built within the last three years, what are the rents, what are the market rents that are going for that? What is, you know, what does that look like? So for a studio, when we went out and used our, our tester complex, it was $1,331 a month for what that market rent would be based on that individual set of facts and circumstances. Which, then using the 80% area median income calculation for a household of two, because we did base this on, you know, kind of the rules that we use for housing, which is two heartbeats per bedroom and/or sleeping room. So with that, their 30% of income being the maximum rent would be $1,110 a month. So that would mean that the developer, or, or the property owner, or whomever, over the course of that, was foregoing a couple hundred dollars a month over this 30-year period that we used in the illustrated example, based on a five-year, 5% cap rate, would be $742,560. And then it just kind of goes based on bedroom size. But we did keep the two heartbeats per sleeping room all the way across the board, just so things are consistent. So for this specific example in scenario one, over the 30-year period, the public benefit for the inclusion of 14 studios, four one-bedrooms to two bedrooms, for a total of 20 units, would be $1,335,360. And then, you know, we did blend this for different AMIs. And, you know, again, same unit, the market rents are the same, you know, comparables were the same, just the price points were different. So that we, you can see how each of the various AMIs will interact with what that calculated public benefit is. So, you know, that kind of working through there for what that value over the 30-year period is. We did intentionally tie this to a starting position of 30 years for the conversation. That's consistent, you know, Arizona Department of Housing, when they put out the tax credits, it's a 30-year agreement. When we're looking at project-based vouchers, it's a 25 to 30-year agreement. So we've remained fairly consistent with, you know, what is typical when you're looking at affordable and workforce housing. So, base starting point, we understand every project is different, and there are individual facts and circumstances that are going to kind of change some of this as it moves forward. You know, Mayor, Maria's project may take a left turn at Albuquerque, mine might take a right turn at Oklahoma City. But at least we all started the conversation at the same point and can then move forward from there. So as part of all of that, we did hold two webinars. One was on November 30th, and one was on December 1st, to, you know, for some discussion and some feedback from the stakeholders who did accept the invitation and participate. Okay. So, you know, Gorman and Companies, Lisk, Urban Land Institute, Maricopa County Association of Governments, Newtown Habitat for Humanity, and the Arizona Housing Coalition. And one thing that I would like to mention is, since the, the preparation of this packet, and since we had those webinars, we have some, received some other comments and feedback on this, which were overall reasonably consistent with what's being presented here. But one thing that I want to make sure we point out- But one thing that I want to make sure we point out, because it is important to put into the four-pager of the document, is this is for conversations that relate to giblets or other types of city-sponsored financing. And, you know, while we knew that in our heads, as we were writing this out, we kind of forgot to put it in the FAQs for everybody. So we want to make sure we get that on paper so we're all on the same page. Yeah.
I would say, Levon, that, it's a really good list, though, of people that you had participated. I mean, it's pretty much the who's who of who the authorities are when it comes to affordable and attainable housing. So I think the list was great.
Thank you. So, there we go. So the stakeholders were quite positive about the guidelines overall. I'd just like to go over some of their comments and a couple concerns that they expressed. First of all, they were unanimous in what they considered to be the logic of the approach, which is this rent reasonableness and the 30-year lure, and that we're trying to create this standard that you could be, you could apply to every individual situation, understanding that, of course, the math would differ in each one, but it could follow the same logic for each one. The second comment was about the idea of the rent reasonableness. You know, as Levon stated, there's a software program that everybody in the business uses, so it's something that they all understood, and they felt that that was a very trackable, gold standard, if you will, to be able to determine what a market rent might be. The third one was regarding the 30-year lure. It was equally considered to be a gold standard, given that it is what the Department of Housing uses as well when they evaluate projects. Fourth, stakeholders asked for more details regarding reporting and monitoring that would be required, and that was actually the genesis for the FAQ page that we came up with, because that's a very important question. We realized after a while, we know what we're talking about, but other people wanted to know, what does that look like? So we added the FAQ section that will really highlight what that looks like. And the good news from our end, if I could speak for Levon a little bit and his group, is they already have a process and protocol in place, so it's not reinventing the wheel. It's applying an already-existing protocol that has worked for them. Now, their work concerns expressed about the amount of staff time that this might require, because they saw it as relatively onerous. We were not, so we were not really in agreement with that, because we are already doing this, and having a standard will actually, on our part, make it a little bit easier, because you can apply it and be consistent. So we tried to allay some fears with that. And then the last was, they wanted to make a request that the purpose of the document was more specific, and that's kind of what Levon was alluding to, how this, this we developed as a way to respond to a request for city-sponsored financing or any kind of incentive. So we try, and also that it's for the creation of workforce and affordable housing. So we went and reworked that first paragraph to try to make sure it was very clear what the, what the vision of the entire standard was.
I was going to worry about the staff time one. And definitely, I know everyone up here is very cognizant of trying to make sure that we're asking staff to do things that are, that make sense, and we're spending staff time wisely. But at the same time, I do think that this is time well-spent, and I know that you all believe the same thing, as you said.
Yes.
Because I think my concern is, you know, I wouldn't want myself or any member of this council to have to go out to the public based on what someone says and just says, oh, well, this is a, you know, of course, the developer's going to say, this is a workforce housing project. And then I go out there and say, yes, it's a workforce housing project, and someone goes and runs their own calculations at some point, or looks at some of the data and says, well, no, it's not. You know, so, I mean, so, you know, definitely, while some of this might be a little bit more time and labor-intensive, I think the outcomes are exactly what we need to make sure that all seven of us can speak very confidently to members of the public and neighbors and say, we know that this has been vetted, and we know that this is affordable housing.
We agree with you, and that was part of the genesis of this, too, for us. We thought, you know what, if we create this standard, it might seem like it's a lot of work, but it's all front-loaded, and the application of it, the implementation of it will be much easier.
And if I could just kind of point out a couple of things as it relates to that with the rent reasonableness software, just because a few questions did come up. We do use a live, a live software that pulls the information from the MLS. It goes out and it does a web scrape off Craigslist. It goes out and pulls from multiple resource, multiple different sources. It is updated every seven days. So at, you know, at best or at worst, we're working off one-week-old information. And at the, the last time I looked, which was a couple weeks ago when we ran some rent reasonables, there were 385,000 and a few digits at the end, individual comparable pieces of information in there. So, you know, when we're going out and we're looking at these, yes, we're refining it so that we're looking at, you know, an apple and an apple complex, but there's a considerable amount of information to be able to draw that comparable from. As it relates to the monitoring and the compliance piece, you know, as most, most everyone knows, you know, housing and with the entitlement programs and what we have, we already have monitoring mechanisms in place that we monitor complexes and programs on an annual basis. So any monitoring for this would be modeled after some of the existing agreements we have with the existing workforce projects, so that it's as, you know, as a middle ground as possible. We're able to go out once a year, double-check everybody's math, run the HQS, make sure the unit's decent, safe, and sanitary, and we're all on the same page. If you need some help, you know, finding tenants, I got a whole, you know, we've got lists and lists of people. We can send your direction. But we also provide assistance and training if you're not used to this type of thing or income qualification. We can provide some assistance, and we've built some Excel worksheets that really you plug in what the income is, and it tells you where they are. So, you know, we've really worked to make this as, while, yes, it's probably an extra step a lot of folks aren't used to, it's as user-friendly as we can possibly make it while still having reliable information.
That takes us into some of these questions that the stakeholders had. So in these webinars, we got the same list of questions on both webinars. That was, the first one, does the covenant have deed restrictions? That is a resounding yes. I mean, the goal of the covenant is to ensure that the city is going to get what is being committed to. So, yes, there are deed restrictions that will last throughout the period of life of the project. So if it's a 30-year project, for 30 years, you'll have a deed restriction. The second one is, must the public benefit be equivalent to the incentive? And the answer to that was also yes. We're looking for an equivalency, because if you're asking for an incentive, we need an equivalent public benefit to be compliant, compliant and conformance with the gift clause. The third one was interesting, and there was a lot of discussion about, actually, and that was about whether or not the same units in a project would always be the ones dedicated to the housing partnership. And our answer was yes, simply because it's easier for us to make sure that we know what apartments we're looking at. When Levon and his team goes in to do the monitoring, they know where they're going, they know what to expect, you know, everything is tied up. So that seemed to be the best case to go forward there. Fourth, would the model require annual recalculations? By that, they're talking about on the guidelines when we were talking about the rent reasonableness. The way we're doing it is the same way we run any kind of giblet calculation. We take it in the current year, the first year of the project, and then you run it out. You're not recalculating every year. It's considered to be, that's a gold standard of how that's being done, and we're just applying that same standard to this. So the fifth one, would the city hire additional staff? We talked a little bit about this already. We said we didn't know, there was no answer to that yet, because it would depend on what the workload looked like, and how many projects we had coming in. I mean, right now, obviously, we're already doing this work, so, you know, being able to streamline, as we've mentioned, and be consistent, and use the standard and implement along the way, potentially, you know, it's not going to require more staff, but we don't know. Maybe it's going to explode, and we're going to be super-successful and have to hire 50 people to help Levon. So time will tell. Sixth one, so what if a landlord wouldn't be able to find an eligible tenant? And that's where the housing department comes into place. They have a lot of good lists. They monitor these things. They have potential tenants. They would be able to essentially do a matchmaking service for the landlord, because the goal is, of course, not to have the, our inventory sit vacant. And finally, you know, would the city take an in-loop payment instead of doing the restrictive covenant? So we were careful with the answer to this one, because the short answer is yes, but the long answer is really, you know, the goal of what we're trying to do and the greater vision that the city, you know, city council is trying to implement, that we're trying to activate, is growing the inventory of mixed-income housing and affordable housing throughout the city. So, you know, just by always taking in the in-loop payment, that kind of defeats that purpose a little bit. I mean, it does allow us, you know, Levon can go out and do that on his own, but there is something to be said about doing it this way, too. So, you know, we're, we just want to be cautious with that.
So, you know, kind of walking through all of those, for the conclusion and the next steps, you know, number one, we did make sure that we were working very closely with the city attorney's office as we were kind of walking through this, so that we didn't, you know, stumble across any landmines unknowingly. And, you know, it's been pretty well-determined that the, or has been determined, that the proposed policy is supportive and consistent with the current case law regarding the gift clause. So the way it's structured is decent. You know, and at this point, staff is requesting council direction regarding, you know, future resolution of the proposed policy, future steps, or, you know, kind of how you'd like to see us proceed from here.
Sounds good. Thank you, Levon. Thank you, Maria. Let me go to Councilmember QB.
Thank you, Maria. Thank you, Levon. So you were tasked with looking at the value, you know, evaluating the public benefit of affordable housing and workforce, and requested giblet incentives. But what about other sort of entitlements, whether it's a height or a density bonus? Has that been calculated, and how we can sort of value that if a developer? You know, and I realize these discussions are sensitive, and they're generally held, you know, not really in public, but if discussing the developer, the possibility of having workforce or affordable housing, and they need a big bonus, a height bonus or density bonus to make that happen, how do we calculate that?
Councilmember QB, it's, while this, this exact policy wasn't entirely designed for that, if council wanted us to do that, we could modify this and adjust the formulas to be able to calculate what that benefit would be. We would definitely have to have the assistance of community development and Ryan Levek's department as we did that, but we could, you know, we could work out formulas for that as well.
Well, I guess I would turn to my council colleagues and ask if that's of interest, because I think this giblets aren't, don't come before us that often, but bonus, height and density bonus opportunities for developers do come before us almost on a regular basis. So I, for one, would like to see if, assuming this isn't a huge task, to see whether we can also accommodate that calculation. And I know there's work being done in community development, looking at formulas for this, so it's already actually being started. It would just be connecting the dots.
Thank you, Councilmember QB. My only thing I was going to say, and I'm going to go to Vice Mayor Keating after that, is, yeah, I know the community development is currently working on kind of draft language for what a density bonus might look like, but I know that that would then therefore have to come back to council at another work-study session to have a discussion, and I know sort of that process is still very much in progress. And so my only concern, I don't have any issue with what Councilmember QB is actually requesting, but my concern is only about timing, because it seems that this could obviously go on for the regular council meeting for January 13th, and we can get this on the books, which would therefore help us with all upcoming projects.
Oh, for sure.
And we can later amend. I just want to make sure that we don't, you know, and I know that's not what you were saying, but that's my only concern, though. So, but other than that, I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate trying to continue to strengthen the policy, so.
Yes, I concur. We don't want to delay, delay progress here. It's a, it's a big step in the right direction, just hoping that we can have, I mean, I realize discussion going on with formulas that community development is bringing up will relate to this, so it's just good to make that desired connection, the interest in seeing that happen stated. Thanks.
That sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember QB. Vice Mayor Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. You actually addressed my concern, and I'm in agreement with you and Councilmember QB. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Navarro?
All right, same. Just one other thing. I was wondering, so are we calculating the percentage, you know, going through the documents today and stuff, you know, the percentage of affordability and what we have as residents, are we trying to keep a standard of what percentage of affordability or workforce or just regular, you know, just regular homes, that mirrors our demographics, that mirrors our residents, I guess, or mirrors our the national standard that we should abide by? Now, I think that we've kind of achieved a little bit above the national standard in terms of affordability, but what guidelines are we going to stay within? So we're not, everything's, everything's, you know, workforce, or, you know, you see what I'm saying? Are we abiding by any standards of the percentage? So if a developer comes in and we're at a point where we're like, hey, we got enough, you know, workforce, we just need regular, you know, market rate, yeah, you're good to go. So we're not having these, I guess, banter's back and forth. Go ahead.
So, Councilmember Navarro, the strategic priority is for us to work to maintain our blend of housing affordability. So we do work to make sure that we have, you know, the 0 to 50s, and the 50 to 80s, and the 80s, you know, 81s to the 120s, and across the board. This was designed so that as, you know, the developer was coming in saying, you know, here's what I'll contribute unit-wise, and here's what I was thinking as far as, you know, the giblet, we could work to back into some numbers, or they could just say, here's how many units, and here's what the price points we're willing to do are, and we could work through that math. But we do, you know, consistently monitor the affordable housing impact statements and, you know, projects that are coming and going to see what's coming in and what's going. So we do have, we are actively watching what's going on, and, you know, I certainly hope we see the day where we can say we don't need any more of X type of housing. But we do, you know, keep, keep an eye on that and would be able to address, you know, what X project, how that would impact our broader goals.
And just to piggyback on that, while we put a lot of effort into this standard, and we hope there's a lot of use for it, not every project, I mean, we will not, this is more of a proactive reaction. If a developer comes to us and says, we really want, you know, the city to incentivize us to build this housing, then, then is when we would say, great, let's talk about what you can give back to the city. You know, so not every project will, of course, be part of this.
Let me go to Councilmember Adams and Councilmember Renando Savage.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to comment on Councilmember QB's comment that I'm supportive of that, just so you have consensus.
Sure. No, thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Let me go to Councilmember Renando Savage.
Thank you, Mayor. You guys, thank you so much for this. I think one of the things that I've experienced over the years, and I love what Councilmember QB said, too, because I think it's really important that we look at all those incentives and really kind of what that value is to the city, regardless of whether it's through affordable housing or some other mechanism. I think it's really good that first, we're all on the same page, and we're treating all the developers the same. So I know if we have developer A, B, and C, the last thing we want is to have A give us something that's of more value than C, and, you know, maybe they got something a little bit more than A. So I feel like this really creates a very level playing field for them, and then just really keeps us all in the loop, and we're all speaking the same language. So super helpful, and this goes right along with, you know, our new top 13 things that we're going to identify, and we talk about, you know, our housing inventory. I think if we, these are going to like live and breathe together, and the more that we see maybe an offset in that inventory, this is where we can really push and understand with our developers, like, hey, look, here is an opportunity, you know, we're willing to incentivize you, but this is really what we need. And if it works, it's great. If it doesn't, it doesn't, I get that, and I respect that. But to me, I think this is going to be very valuable and very helpful. So I appreciate it, and I look forward to using it. And I don't want to hold anything up, but I do like the idea of what Councilmember QB said, too, so to incorporate that somehow, if not now, down the road.
Thanks, too.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Councilmember Garland?
Yeah, I agree with what Councilmember QB also said. So I do think they, they seem to be two separate things, so this would be coming from your department and the other one coming from Ryan, but it would be helpful in the same way. I think that's great. I do like, you said proactive, and that's what I had down here. I like that this is being proactive, so that we are ready when the developer comes, we have this in our hand. And I also really like the consistency of it, that we are being the same with everybody that comes, we're not picking favorites or, or anything else. So I really appreciate all the work that you guys put into this. I think it's going to make a big difference moving forward for the developers and just for our relationships with the people that we work with outside of the city walls. So I just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Garland?
And actually, if you don't mind, I wanted to say one more thing that came through the webinars. The stakeholders that we talked to, they said, when it's passed, share it with us. We want to share it regionally. So I think there's a chance for something bigger here based on the work that's already been done.
Councilmember QB?
Just a quick question. I imagine this tool is going to be applied for upcoming decisions that we might have in January or early February about developments. Is that going to be a part of the packet the next, when we go to a second read for future developments that are coming up?
Yes, Council-
Yes, Councilmember Navarro?
I like the idea. I agree with the idea. There's only one thing that gives me hesitation on developments that are operating, that already in the process. This is great for, here it comes into the city, this is what our playing field is. I do have a little hardship on, we've been negotiating or we've been doing things with developments and then we're going to throw another thing on top of stuff. So, that's my only concern, but I do like it.
But I would say, I would say, though, there has been discussion, well, we need to find out what the value is. So, that was always being pushed off, we're going to get that, we're going to get that. I just assumed it was going to be, this tool will be used to help analyze that opportunity. So, I know we're getting into territory, we're talking about something that hasn't, that isn't on the agenda, but maybe we could discuss it at the next meeting.
I was trying to read Judy's eyes on that one, but.
Because it was, it's not like we're creating something new. We always are going to analyze, if a developer brings us an opportunity, we're going to analyze and look at the benefits of it in any case. We just happen to have a tool now to help us achieve that.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I would think that, I mean, clearly, I think we only have one project that I believe is up for kind of second hearing and final disposition on January 13th. And obviously, given the fact that this would be going on the RCM for that date, too, then that would not fall subject to this because we're not, we haven't even technically approved it as a council yet. So, but I'm comfortable with the notion of anything after that, once the policy is actually in place. But I get Councilmember Navarro's concern, that if someone came in and they were playing by the sort of pre-existing rules, then at the 11th hour, basically saying, oh, by the way, we now have this thing and if your project doesn't conform, like, we're going to, you know, kind of recommend denial from a staff standpoint. So, I understand that concern. How would that be used in that situation, just so I kind of have a better understanding?
So, that's a great question. And I think what we want to say is that there are two different things happening here. What's happening with the project that you're talking about, that's a regulatory decision as to whether or not they can, they can do their project. They have not come forward with us yet to talk about a development agreement. Everything that we're doing would be through a development agreement. So, if they still wanted to do that, this is then totally open and available for that.
I think that might solve the problem. That's great. Thank you. All right. So, any other further comments or questions? So, it sounds like, just to try to restate the consensus, it sounds like there's consensus to move forward with this and see if we can agendize this for the January 13th regular council meeting for formal approval through resolution. And also, to have a future conversation, I should say, I know that Ryan and Ambika are currently working right now on, I would say, the density bonus 2.0 plan to bring back to the council. I know that I had a meeting with them, I know Councilmember QB did as well, where they talked about looking at three different cities within the state of Arizona and to kind of see what existing density bonus programs there might be, but there was also a request to see if we could look outside of the state of Arizona and see who else might have density bonus programs that have frankly been successful. Clearly, that can present some challenges because Arizona state law is very different than any other community. But still, you know, given that, I guess, you know, I'm kind of looking at Ryan, can we kind of talk about bringing that back for a future work-study session at the point that you and Ambika feel that the presentation is ready, I guess? So, I mean, but I mean, obviously, not trying to rush it because we want to make sure, I know the previous conversation about this happened before I, you know, came on as mayor and I know it was complicated and challenging, so I definitely want to make sure that, you know, you come forward at a point that you feel comfortable with the end product. So, that was a long statement, I'm sorry.
I believe we initially planned to go to one of the council subcommittees, but if we wanted to direct it back to the work-study session, we can certainly do that.
That is, so, I'm trying to think, what council subcommittee do you think that would?
I think it was Lawrence.
Oh, so.
Who wants it?
Well, we can work it out later, sorry. So, that sounds good. So, yeah, we can start with the council subcommittee and, yeah, then bring it to work-study. All right. So, once again, thank you so much for all your great work. This is really exciting and I think this is really kind of a new chapter in Tempe history, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have item 2E, Tempe Municipal Operations Center update and impact to our CIP. I know this presentation is only for information only, so we have Tom Dunzing and Mark Day. And I'll turn it over to you.
Mayor, council, good evening. Tom Dunzing, interim deputy city manager and CFO. I'm joined here by Mr. Mark Day, municipal budget director. And we're here to talk about the Tempe Municipal Operations Center and really the update on the timing, cost, and the funding of this project. Next slide.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Mark Day, municipal budget director. So, tonight's discussion about the city's capital improvement program and the budget process aligns to council strategic priority number five, financial stability and vitality, and then two measures here, 5.04, maintain highest general obligation or GO bond credit rating and maintain general fund, unassigned fund balance at a minimum of 20% and maximum of 30% of general fund revenue.
So, Mayor and council, this item's for information discussion only. So, the question is, why are we here tonight? What we're going to get to is, this is a very significant CIP request that you'll see in this upcoming budget process, and we wanted to get it before you and sort of explain what we think the impact is going to be on this upcoming CIP. We'd like to review the acceleration of the traffic operations yard. Mark will get into a little history of the sale of the traffic operations yard and the requirement to get off that property and relocate those operations to another site, and that's the TMOC site. We will present to you updated TMOC cost estimates that we have, the most updated that we have. We've worked very closely with engineering, who's been phenomenal in this process. And the, due to the fact that we had to get off, or we will have to get off, the traffic operations site really accelerated the work, excuse me, that our engineering department, our engineering transportation department had to do in order to meet the timelines of that sale. And then what we'll do is we'll provide an overview of what does this acceleration look like in the upcoming CIP process? And again, we'll get into it, but this is a very significant costly project and we want to get it for council so you know what to expect when we come back with the CIP requests in February. And again, when Mark and I go back and we size the CIP requests for council consideration in March.
Okay, as Tom mentioned, there, the capital budget process, there's, on your slide here, you can see the public dates that are part of that process on the left side of the screen. We'll be back on February 17th with all the proposed projects. Then, we have public forums scheduled, virtual, in-person, and online in February and March. Then, on March 24th, we have the initial recommended projects that will come forward and then a follow-up session if needed. And then, April 21st, we come forward with the city managers' recommended budget, which would include the capital program with a follow-up meeting. And then, you can see the last dates in May and June are the formal budget adoption process, the dates for those. Okay, a little background on the Tempe Municipal Operations Center or TMOC. So, on April 25th, the facility's master plan was adopted by council. So, this was a study that was done by the Makers Group and they looked at most of the city facilities, looked at their condition, did an assessment, and laid out a plan for their refurbishment or replacement. As it relates to the Hardy Yard, the Traffic Ops Yard, and the majority of the Priest Yard, they had estimated that replacement cost at $63.9 million. And you can see there's quite a bit of spread of dates when they thought that would occur a 12-year period, and that was based on the remaining life cycle of those facilities. It did not include the relocation of facilities and custodial. They had recommended a warehouse-type solution for those two areas rather than locating to a different site. And then, last May and June, we had tentative and final adoption, which included the five-year capital program. We did put a placeholder in that for the design and startup construction of a yet-to-be-identified city facility. So, we knew that we needed to start, make some progress on this facility's master plan. So, in year four and five, we had put a placeholder in there, and that was $27.5 million funded by GO bonds, which would be, require, the November 24th, we have a bond election, it would be part of that, but it was within our capacity at that time. And then, on June 10th, so the same day that we did final adoption, the sale of the Traffic Ops site was approved. And provisions of that sale were that that site would have to be vacated by the summer of 2023, so a two-year turnaround. So, after extensive research, the city-owned 143 site was identified as the best option, and this was the same as in the Makers study, for relocation of the Traffic Ops site and the Priest Yards. So, based on the compressed timeline to vacate the Traffic Ops site, we've taken some, staff has taken some steps already. So, on May 21st, council approved $300,000 in funding for initial TMOC site work. And then, on November 9th, another $5.4 million in funding was approved by council for TMOC site design. Engineering has let us know that additional funding will be required this fiscal year to move forward with site preparation and material acquisition.
Thanks, Mark. What we want to do is kind of transition now to the cost, the timing, and the funding of this transition to the TMOC site. I'd like to step back to the November 4th work-study session, and that's where Ken Jones and Mark Day presented the long-range forecast. And there was two items that they talked about in that presentation that are related to this presentation tonight. The first one is the need to fund a new TMOC site to accommodate Traffic Ops and Priest Yard was identified in that presentation. And the second thing that they talked about was $19.7 million of general fund cash that was identified in the long-range forecast as being available to fund CIP projects. In other words, cash-funded Pago for CIP projects. And I'll refer back to that number in a couple of slides on how that particular cash that's set aside could be utilized for this transition to the TMOC site. The update, pardon me, the updated cost estimates of the construction of this site is $90 million. And to put that in a little bit of perspective, and it's one of the reasons we're here before you tonight, that is actually $34 million larger than the largest governmental CIP project in the current CIP plan. So, it's significant. A majority of that is not identified in the current CIP. And so, one of the things that Mark and I want to do is explain to council how we think that can fit in the CIP and be funded and what really is the impact on the other projects of doing that. So, you'll see that it's broken down into two phases. We work with engineering, again, who are phenomenal and actually did quite a bit of work on this. And to date, very preliminary, the cost estimates for Phase 1, which is the relocation of the Traffic Ops Yard, is $39.4 million. Again, or one of the things I'd like to explain is, the police impound yard is not included in this Phase 1 cost estimate. As council knows, we purchased a site recently, separate from this TMOC site, and any of these cost estimates that we're going to present tonight really don't include any improvements to that site. So, we'll have to work with the department on fitting that into the CIP. The next phase of this, which we're calling Phase 2, is the Priest Yard relocation. We know that Priest Yard is at the end of its life. And the Makers study did recommend that a majority of that site be relocated to the TMOC site. And the cost identified to relocate that site, which does not include the compost operations, facilities or custodial, or the Hardy Yard, the cost is $50.6 million. So, a little bit more in the Phase 2 of this. And so, I'll get into a little bit what we would propose as funding for Phase 1, what we would propose as funding for Phase 2. I can tell council tonight, we feel like we could finance both of these, and there's a couple of reasons why. A big reason is the ARPA funding that we were successful at getting. Will go a long way to offsetting these costs. I'm going to spend, excuse me, a little bit of time on the next couple of slides because this really kind of tells the picture. In the current CIP, which Mark talked about, where it was tentatively adopted in May 2021, there was a placeholder in that CIP. And you can see, that's that top gray bar, and in that top gray bar, we identified $27.5 million for future building purposes for, and knowing that what was coming is an eventual relocation of these sites. So, what we have done is, we have said, what's going to be the impact of funding the traffic operations yard and funding eventually the Priest Yard relocation to this site? And Mark and I broke it down in two scenarios and I'll explain the two scenarios in a little bit of detail. The first one, what we've affectionately called, is the phased relocation. And what the phased relocation does is, in the blue, that is the cost of relocating the traffic operations site. It's the cost to get off the traffic operations site. The completion of that project may or may not be June 2023, but we know we need to get off that site per the agreement when we, or when we sold the property. So, you'll see in the phased relocation, the CIP that will come before you will be a two-year CIP to fund the, or to fund the move of that traffic operations yard. Let me talk a little bit about the accelerated relocation and then I'll kind of hop back and forth a little bit. Accelerated relocation, you'll see that blue bar is the same. We know we need to get off the site, we know we need to get it off the site by June 2023. I think it's July 2023, but we'll call it June 2023. Now, let's look at the green bar. That's Phase 2. That's the Priest Yard relocation. The phased relocation scenario that you see before you basically times that relocation with what's in the current CIP. Very simple. So, you'll see, the design would start in fiscal year 2425 and the relocation of that particular site would take approximately three years. Now, one of the things that engineering is doing is, they are preparing this site for the eventual relocation of both those operations, Phase 1, Phase 2. They're doing a little bit more extensive grading on the site to prepare for the Phase 2 relocation. And what you see in the accelerated relocation is, what would it look like if we just continued that work through fiscal 2324? In other words, they can start construction, they can avoid inflation costs, which are real, and basically do that second Phase 2 Priest Yard relocation by the end of 2324. And so, I'm going to flip to the next slide here.
Quick thing, actually. Councilmember Adams has a question?
Just a quick question, just to clarify. So, both of the, all of the operations will be located on one site, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, what you see here are the funding sources of both those phases that I talked about. And there's a couple of takeaways on this slide. You can see on that first line, we would probably, at this point, propose at about $39.4 million of the ARPA funding, which we will have by June 2022, to go toward the cost of that Phase 1 relocation. We've engaged with a consultant. We had a long discussion with a consultant today. This is an eligible project and frankly, it fits nicely into what we want to do. Council gave direction that we want to use this ARPA funding on projects, so it would work with this. Thanks, Stephen. Next, I'm going to talk about the general fund cash. As you recall, in the forecast that we, that was presented in November, there was $19.7 million of general fund cash identified to fund CIP. So, in the phased relocation, that is the middle section of this where we're not having to start construction on Phase 2 until later. What we feel is, we can fit that in to the GO bond question, we can manage some of the GO bond projects to maybe reduce or defer, and then what that And then what that does is, that would mean we would not need to use that $19.7 million set aside. Now, the accelerated relocation, if I can go back to this, that compresses it really within the next, in about two and a half years. So in order to accommodate the accelerated relocation, at this point, we feel like we would need to utilize that $19.7 million that was set aside in the general fund for CIP PGO. Again, this is at the will of the council. Marketized job is to come back and size this, and then council makes the decision on the funding source that they would like to use. The next line is solid waste contribution. Let me talk a little bit about that. This new T-MOC site will house the solid waste operations. We think that, well, in fairness to the enterprise fund, they should contribute toward the construction of this. What we've proposed to do is phase out certain costs over the next several years. And what that would do is leave capacity in the solid waste fund for them to be able to finance $20 million of improvements. We would go out and bond for that $20 million. But kind of the end story is, we think we can do that with zero impact to the solid waste fund. And then finally, I'll talk a little bit about the geo-bonds. Phased relocation, we would identify 30.6 million of geo-bonds for this project. Phased relocation is really over an extended time period, so we've got a couple of things happening. One is, we've got five years to be able to manage projects, manage geo-bond-funded projects, to be able to kind of smooth it out a little bit. Plus, we have another authorization election coming in November 2024. And we would propose going forward in an authorization election to finance some of these. So it's a little bit less of an impact. If we do the accelerated relocation, the use of general obligation bonds is less. One of the things that Mark and I would have to do is, we would have to manage that $10.9 million basically over two years. So that could be deferring projects, that could be eliminating projects. Again, council would have the final say in that. Mark and I would just bring the options to council. If, in the event that we identify another priority for this general fund cash, the CIP PGO, let's say we identify a $5 million project, that is very high priority for the council. We would simply decrease the amount of general fund cash available for this project, increase the amount of geo-bonds needed for this project, and it would just be a little bit more work for Mark and I and staff to be able to fit that into the CIP. So the bottom line of this chart, under either of these scenarios, we feel like we could do either one. We feel like we could wait and not fund Phase 2 of T-MOC until the, you know, until the five years of the CIP. We also feel like we could accelerate it, avoid the risk of inflation, and continue on with that project until it's completed.
Councilmember Cubey?
Just a quick question. I hope it's quick. What is the useful life, how many years remaining with the priest yard?
Councilmember Cubey, mayor members of council. I don't know the specific answer to that question. It's something we would have to get back to. I know Makers identified it as a fairly high priority in their June 2019 study. It is coming to the end of its life fairly quickly.
Yeah, I guess I would like to know, not, you know, tonight then, but is it five years? Is it 10 years? I know with the hardy yard, it still had years, but we made this decision to advance it because of the sale. But, you know, what would be the useful life of the priest yard? I would like to know that, if that's okay with the rest of the council.
Sure, absolutely. Everybody okay?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Ching.
Marilyn's available. She worked with and presented Makers. She can provide that information.
Come on up, Marilyn.
Thank you, mayor and members of council. You're referring back to, Councilmember Cubey, you're referring back to the Makers study that was completed in 2019. We did a condition assessment on a variety of our facilities, and quite honestly, the priest life has zero years left. It's in serious need of relocation. And Tom can tell you that Charlie has attempted to balance maintenance versus the actual, the value of the asset for the last five years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn.
So what Mark and I wanted to do is just put before you tonight, again, we are not looking for direction, this is for information only, but really, it's some of the considerations when we come back to you at the CIP. And what we've talked a little bit about before is accelerated relocation, we feel will require the use of general fund cash that has been identified in the forecast. The accelerated relocation was not planned in the November 2020 bond authorization election. And I touched on it a little bit, is we will have the requirement to go back and have to look at the geo-bond-funded projects, to work with the departments if we need to get the capacity to be able to fund this relocation. Again, what that may mean is deferral or decrease, you know, however we can really fit this into our geo-bond program. If we do the phased approach, it allows for the planning of this over a period of five years versus a compressed approach, the planning is really squeezed to two years. The phased approach really doesn't take into consider, or really, you're more at risk of, what is inflation going to do? There's all sorts of opinions about inflation right now. Some of the opinions is, we're at an all-time high right now. Some of the opinions are, we're going to stay there and increase a little bit. So we frankly don't know. And that's why you see those two, when we talk about Phase 1, Phase 2, we didn't make an inflation assumption on this. The last is, the phased approach will just frankly result in the priest yard remaining at the site for several additional years for a facility that's really at the end of its useful life. Talked a little bit about, I'm so sorry about the coughing. Talked a little bit about the use of the ARPA funding. There were other projects that were identified with ARPA funding. When Mark and I go back and size the CIP, we will have to address those. But again, we'll bring those back to council for the best funding recommendation. And with that, I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Sounds good. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Mark. Now, really informative presentation, really appreciate it. Any councilmembers, any comments or questions, or if this item is only for information and for no direction, but wanted to see if anyone had anything they wanted to ask. All right, wow. Presentation was that good, guys.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council.
Thank you so much, really appreciate it. All right, next up, item number three, call to the audience. The city council welcomes public comment at this time for items listed under Section 4, Committee of the Whole Items on this work-study session agenda. There is a three-minute time limit for speaker. Madam Clerk, are there any speaker or comment cards received from the public?
No submissions for item four.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to go next to item four, Committee of the Whole Items, items ready for city council direction or status update. The first item ready for city council direction is item one, Workforce Readiness and Economic Vitality Council Committee, the veteran navigator position.
Are you calling on us, Mayor?
Oh, sure. This comes from Arredondo Savage.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The vice mayor and I are very happy to come back with a couple of recommendations. First and foremost, I know it's been a little while since we brought back the last initiative, which was our Veterans Banner Program. So hopefully you guys remembered that, and it was really well-received. And I just want to say thank you so much for DTA, for all of you supporting that initiative, and all the people that participated in that program. It was really great to see so many of our local veterans hanging high on those banners. It was really amazing. Okay, so the next thing that we wanted to do in our rev committee meeting was just really address everything that we're doing via veterans. And many of you may know, well, some of us that have been here for a little while, recall that we actually had a working group back in 2015, and the honorable mayor was on that original working group, and we talked about, hey, what can the city of Tempe do to really help and address our veteran population? Well, I think the one thing that I've learned and have come to really appreciate is that the fact, when we brought everybody together back then, we really weren't doing anything for our veterans. And I hate to say that as a community that is so giving and caring and takes care of all of our populations, but we really recognized the only thing that we did actively was passively, I hate to say this, but passively support the Veterans Day Parade. And that was pretty much it. We didn't have any idea of what our veteran population looked like, how many of our own employees were veterans. And there was just so much opportunity for us as a community to really grow in what we were doing to support all of our veteran population. So since then, we've learned a ton. So we learned that we have about 10,000 veterans in the city of Tempe. We learned that we have over 100 veterans that are employees here in the city of Tempe. We've learned that there are about 133 homeless veterans here in the city of Tempe. We've also learned that about 1,000 people have actually gone through our veterans. It kind of makes me really proud, so I wish Judge Kane was here and all the people that helped. And if you guys remember Judge Majestic, that we've had 1,000 people successfully complete and graduate our veterans court. And to me, that is just amazing, that we've really changed the course and the directory of a lot of these people's lives. So to me, that's really cool, and we've come a long way. You've seen a lot of things that we've been able to do, like the banner program, our enhanced Veterans Day Parade, that unfortunately was canceled two years in a row. Now we are also celebrating those new community members that are decided to commit to becoming veterans someday as they join the service. I mean, we've just been able to do a lot more things, and I'm certainly grateful for that. But the one thing that we've realized too is, and able to make these things happen, to provide these resources, these services, we are working with so many of our different departments. So we are working through human services, municipal courts, community services, economic development, human resources, community development, and the city manager's office to be able to pull all these things together. So in your packet, you guys will see, we actually did a memorandum, so thank you, Tim, for picking that up, as Alex was the one that really helped us kind of pull everything together. And we miss Alex, and he was super great and instrumental. No dig on you, Tim, at all. And then also in there, we put just a couple of slides in there, just to kind of show some of the things that we've done, that we've been able to evolve in, and, you know, some of our challenges. I think anybody that knows, that has ever been in the military before, has a military family, navigating, I think, those resources and services that they've earned sometimes is always challenging. If you've ever tried to get connected with the Veterans Affairs, I mean, it is not an easy thing to do, to ensure that we are addressing mental health, that we are addressing sexual military trauma, that we are talking about homelessness, and that we are working with all of our veterans, whatever their status may be, that it really takes somebody that can help coordinate these efforts and really understand the unique resources and services that are out there and available. So the one thing that we thought would be really important to continue this great work, to enhance this work, was to bring forth a veterans coordinator position, to really bring everybody together. We're super excited about it, Vice Mayor.
Yep.
So hopefully, I've done halfway decent job of, so it's really hard to breathe in these masks, but just really kind of understanding, I think, the need and the importance of being able to move forward and really taking care of our veteran population. Now knowing what we do, being able to really leverage and coordinate our partners, our those specialist organizations, and to really have somebody that is passionate and understands the uniqueness of our veterans and really, I think, can be the point of contact to all of our departments, to ensure that we continue these wonderful programs and that we are able to provide those resources, those services, and just leverage everything that we're able to do, and really do it in unison with a lot of synergy for the city of Tempe. Hopefully, I covered that. Okay, Vice Mayor? Anything you want to add?
Yes, thank you very much, Councilmember Arredondo Savage, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think you do cover it pretty well. One of the things that I certainly experience quite often when talking to residents is they're not aware of the level of city services that we offer. And, you know, and certainly, you know, dealing with, you know, Tempe Works, for example, it's a complicated process, not a lot of people are aware of it. And I certainly think that program will benefit from, is already benefiting from a coordinator. And I think, you know, Veterans Affairs would absolutely benefit from a coordinator as well, not only getting the word out to veterans and their family members, but then making sure they're able to navigate what can be, you know, businessine and complicated and sometimes even convoluted, I think all those three words mean the same thing, process. So I do think this would be helpful for the veterans in our community and for our city at large. So I thank you for being the driving force behind this and bringing this forward to council tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers' comments or questions? Councilmember Cubey?
Vice Mayor Keating and Councilmember Arredondo Savage, 11 years on this council and maybe even a little bit more, and you really have built this huge legacy of support for our veterans and so many programs, like you say, that are in different, housed in different places, but maybe not with one person's overall responsibility. So recognize that this is the perfect sort of confluence with the works, with the working group, and also now the committee to come up and recommend a position, and I would highly support it. I think that it's needed, and we need to have a home for veteran services. We have so many wonderful things we do, including the veterans court. And I just commend you guys for bringing this up and bringing to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cubey. Councilmember Garland?
I just want to echo all that's already been said, but, you know, I think about that if you look at some of the statistics for the city of Tempe, we have about 15,000 veterans in our city. And it's not just the veterans that you end up serving as a daughter of a Navy man. You know, you have the additional family members also, so you're serving and helping the veteran, but you're also helping the family in need. So there's lots of people in there. You know, the other thing I was thinking about is that there are funds and grants out there for veterans, and it would be great to have somebody that was dedicated to be able to go do those researches, to see what kind of money we can bring into the city to be able to further those programs that we may not even know about. But I know I've heard of them sitting for hours at the veterans hospital for my dad. But anyway, the other thing is, I was thinking about, you know, the outreach that we could be doing to our community. And you had mentioned the people that are getting, are joining the military. I was a part of, attended a massing of colors that was at Marcos Dineso High School, I think it was last week. And there were probably 100 JROTC program students there, that it would have been really great if we had a program coordinator that could be there and work with those kids and be a part of that program and process also. So I would like to say that I'm also in support of it. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Councilmember DeBarro?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and Councilmember Arredondo Savage, she has been the trademark when it comes down to veteran services. And Councilmember Keating, you know, just being there with her and just really, actually, both of them providing these programs. But I get where Robin's at, I understand it, and I think it's beneficial, highly beneficial, and I will support it. Always keep in mind, you know, these things are asked for the fiscal year, starting in July. And obviously, we put all these things up against everything else, but I think this has value, especially when you're talking about community policing and working with homelessness and working with our society, within our community to provide services. These are one of those layers that takes these things either out of the street or out of the police department's hands when you have other alternatives. So I think the benefit of it is going to have some benefit even on the policing side. So I think, and not just with, just various categories, but I think the other side, and I like what you said, because I was at a conference in DC and I had a discussion with the veterans hospital, it is complicated to navigate through a system like that. And just even talking to people in DC and talking about the challenges we had in terms of just patient care on the fire department level, it was baffling to have the higher-ups of the veterans hospital still not understand actually what is going on on the ground level. And so I think a coordinator, just to benefit on those items, is going to be huge. So, thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. So, quick thing, just from a clarification standpoint, I want to make sure to, and first of all, I should say I'm supportive as well of the position, and I thank Councilmember Arredondo Savage and Vice Mayor Keating for all their hard work and due diligence in bringing this forward. I, you know, really, it was just great hearing Councilmember Arredondo Savage talk about all the programs, you know, kind of going back to the 2015 time that you and I spent together working on behalf of veterans issues. But everything to the parade, to community salutes, to the banner program, and just, and I know I'm leaving out a bunch of other efforts, the breakfast that we had on Veterans Day as well. So I mean, there's a number of great things that are being currently done, but I can also see the benefit of having a nav- but I can also see the benefit of having a navigator whose job it really is to shepherd a lot of these programs through. I know we've had a lot of folks on city staff, we talked about, you know, Alex Chin and Tim Gomez, Parish Byes, who've worked on these initiatives for quite a number of years, but this would really be trying to get a central person whose responsibility it really is to oversee all these initiatives, and I can definitely see a need for that. So I support that. The question I was going to ask, though, was just from a budgeting standpoint, for Tom and Mark's benefit, are we talking about, you know, putting this into the supplementals for the upcoming year to compete? Are we talking about just funding this right now? I just wanted to make sure that I kind of got clear direction from council about exactly what you'd like to do. Yes, Councilmember Aradona Savage?
We are asking it to be a pre-approve for the 2020, 22, 23 budget.
Okay.
So not until the budget cycle.
Okay.
Unless you want to do it sooner, we wouldn't complain.
Sounds good. Councilmember Devaro, you still working with that?
No, I'm okay with that. That's the, one of my things, is I just want to make sure that we're not overstepping. I know we do sometimes, but I think that just because there's behind the scene work that has to still kind of gear up, that I just would like to wait till then.
Yes, Councilmember Adams?
I would also like to wait for the next budget year. Thank you.
Sounds good. And I'm okay with that as well. So the notion will be to pre-approve this for the upcoming budget year for July 1st, when the new fiscal year starts. So it sounds like we have consensus to move forward with that item.
Mayor, can I just say thank you to Naomi Farrell?
Yes, please.
You know, Naomi, you were the one that, you and your department, that actually, you know, helped us become the very first veteran supportive city, and that wouldn't have happened with all the great things that you guys have really done and we've pushed, but you guys, every time, have stood up and, you know, rose, rose to the occasion. So I just want to say thank you, and really, to all the departments that have continually worked to really support our veterans in so many different ways. Like the mayor said, there's so many different things going on, and I think this is just going to be able to take us to the next level, so much appreciated.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Anyone else? Comments or questions? All right. Sounds good. All right, wonderful. We have consensus on that item. Thank you so much. Appreciate the committee for bringing that forward. The second item, though, I'm going to go ahead and stay with Vice Mayor Keating and Councilmember Aradona Savage, which is the Tempe Pre Program Evaluation.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I wanted to give, I know Councilmember Aradona Savage and I wanted to give an update on the Tempe Pre efforts. I'm just going to get right to the chase. I mean, we all know what a great program Tempe Pre is. I mean, the data's there to show not only has it helped the children, but the individual families as well, work longer hours, go back to school, find, you know, more housing. We've been through this, you know, several times in the five years that the Tempe Pre has been in existence. For the longest time, my plan was to refer a tax initiative to the ballot and let the voters of Tempe decide. You know, we've invested a lot of money in this program, and eventually, we need to ask the voters, is this something you value or not? Does it benefit our city or not? So I'm fully prepared to do that, and I think that they will judge the program as I and many of this council have, as being well worth it. However, we did kind of get, I don't want to say, only what I can think of is kneecap, but that's not really, that's not really a good descriptor, right?
I kind of like that language, though.
Well, the Build Back Better Bill, right? And obviously, it looked a lot better, a lot more likely to pass a couple of weeks ago when we came up with this recommendation than it does currently, but, you know, we still try to be optimistic about it. You know, I mean, President Biden's Build Back Better Bill would include universal pre-K for qualifying cities, and the city of Tempe has a very, very good program. So what we kind of thought was, you know, let's wait on, basically, hey, why should we pay for it if we can get the federal government to pay for it, right? So we decided, since we found out, and I'm surprised that at this number, the program is funded, you know, up until at least May of 2023. So we weren't going to run out of money as we thought we were going to, but we still have an additional two years of funding right now. So I think it would be better, and I am committed to not only preserving the existing program, but expanding the existing program. If I have my way, there will be universal pre-K in the city of Tempe, where the federal government, or the state government, or the city government pays for it. And that will be something that will be coming back. But however, now with, you know, Build Back Better being a possibility, with the fact that we still have funds in the bank to keep the program going long enough to find out if that bill's going to pass, maybe they'll get another swing at it next year as well. And let's be real about it, too, the political situation right now may not be the best in November to pass something like this, and I think it might be a lot better in November of 2024 to pass something like this. So for now, our recommendation is to continue funding the program as is, and if, when May of 2023 comes up, we'll definitely have to allot some city funds to keep the program going, but at some point, we will have to address how the long-term funding of the program. And again, if, whether it's the federal government, state government, or city government, you know, I'm committed, I know many on this council are as well, as to making Tempe Pre a permanent fixture of our city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Keating. Comments or questions? Yes, please, Councilmember Aradona Savage?
I just want to just piggyback a little bit on what the Vice Mayor said, too, and I know he's picked up the charge a lot when it comes to Tempe Pre and really ensuring that we continue to put together for this, for this program. And I just got to say, you know, I think the one thing that we've learned, and I want to say thank you to the staff, because they came to our committee like three times, and we talked, and we asked a lot of questions, and we asked more questions, and more questions, and more questions. So thank you to all of our staff, and again, to Alex and Tim for putting this all together. But, you know, I think the one thing that we learned is this is a really valuable program, and it's doing a lot of really good and some really positive, unexpected consequences, I guess, if that's what you would say, that we really didn't even know. The ability to touch the whole family, I think, is one of the things that we can all say, is something that we didn't really expect. So there was still some questions that we thought we needed to get answered, and that's why we thought it would be great to incorporate the auditor, to really help us really understand, to make sure that we are being, that when we talk about the way we operate, we talk about the way that we're able to receive funds, which has kind of been a challenge when it comes to operations, is another thing that we learned. We've created a lot of great funds for the ability to really look at the data. I mean, we are a data-driven community, and the data that we have is very positive when it comes to Tempe Pre. So that's been really good. I think that money's been really well spent, but we haven't really received much money at all for operations. So I think it's really good to just make sure that we are looking at, and, you know, turning, overturning all the stones, making sure that we're looking at, see if there are federal dollars, any type of dollars, and really waiting for this Build Back Better could be a game changer for us. I mean, that could be really great. So why not evaluate what we're doing and then make sure we are in the best possible place to be able to be maybe one of the very first cities to receive those funds? So, you know, we're pretty excited about that opportunity, and again, just kudos to the Vice Mayor for, you know, really ensuring that we keep this front and center.
Thank you, Councilmember Aradona Savage. Will we go to Councilmember Devaro?
First off, thank you, and absolutely agree, and I think we all know that this has been a great program for us in continuing it going forward. Just a single question is, I know that years past, we tried, I mentioned either working with the grow houses, the medical marijuana industry, because at the time, their revenues, they had to give back to various organizations. Are we attempting to tap into still those revenues? Because as I still see it, they still can contribute to very large amounts of money, and I think this program would be strategic for them to give back, especially the, within our city, what we have, but I definitely would love for that to be tapped into, so to speak.
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Devaro, I could answer that. So I'm not positive about the marijuana industry, but I do have some sort of recollection that we did get, we have gotten several corporate donations to the program over the course of the last year and a half, I think probably around $60,000, $70,000. Maybe staff can correct me if I'm wrong. I think, I have this vague recollection of maybe Harvest or one of them giving us a check, but I'm not positive about that industry specifically, but it's definitely something that we should look into if not.
And Mayor, and it's just one of those things, once again, the broadcast, the advertisement of the success of this program, what we do in Tempe, when I tell people outside of our city, they're like, what? You know, it's unbelievable. So it's just something that I know that's got to get some momentum, but I believe that there's still more money out there that could be buzzed on.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Devaro. Any other councilmembers? Councilmember Garland?
I just want to say, I really appreciate the information that you guys put in our packet, all the details regarding the pre-K program, and I am in support of you guys moving this forward with the audit. Nice job.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Anyone else? All right. Sounds good. Well, it sounds like there is direction to continue the Tempe Pre funding and come back in, as Vice Mayor Keating talked about, in 2023, and talk about what a long-term funding solution might look like, but for now, at least, we need to keep the program going. I completely agree. It's been an extremely successful program. It's one, apparently, the meeting's over because the lights are out.
Staff's telling us to wrap it up.
With that said, okay, I'm done, I'm done. It's a great program, I love it. Thank you so much. Thank you, everybody. Good night, good night. All right, let's see, item four B here, council committees in progress. Any councilmember want to provide an update on any of the committees, human services and community safety, sustainable and livable communities, oh my gosh, let there be light, workforce readiness and economic vitality? Everybody good? All right, sounds good. Well, the next item on the agenda that is future agenda items, council members may request that an agenda item be added to a future issue review session. In accordance with the open meeting law, there should be no discussion of the item other than to clarify the request. Any future agenda items anyone wants added? Councilmember Garland?
Hi, thank you, Mayor. About a year ago, we passed the land acknowledgement resolution, and we made a commitment to keep that as a living document. Councilmember QB and I have been talking about, we'd like to hear, see if we could hear from staff to talk about the possibility of putting that land acknowledgement resolution in our RFP process. So it would be like on development projects with city-owned land, but it could be with any process. So we'd like to know if we can hear from our, maybe, I don't know what department, community development, procurement, our government relations departments, about what that might look like if we were able to do that, and because we both think that it's really important to try to make sure that we have our indigenous voices are heard in that process and moving forward. So just wondering if we could maybe incorporate that into one of the issue review sessions.
I am totally fine with that. Everyone else okay? Okay, perfect. So I guess, Mr. City Manager, we can work on exactly when to schedule that for a future work study agenda?
Yes.
Well done, Andrew. Yes.[1753.11]